So atong i-contrast siya, kasi kalahiyan eh, almost the same, diba? Cooperation versus collaboration, unsa difference aning duha. Okay, so first we have to take up about cooperation. What is cooperation? If you were a leader, unsa dapat ni mong himoon para mag-cooperate ang imuhang mga sakop o mga members. Yes, cooperation requires influence. Dapat influential ka apagka leader kay para ma-cooperate ang mga tao sa pagtrabaho sa gusto ni mong i-achieve. So a leader requires influence. So letter A, a leader ought to be influential. So dapat influential siya kay para aduna say dating si mga members. Ako as pastor, no, kinalan maging influential ko kay para kung dunay isa kabutang i-achieve, mo-cooperate sila. Most members of an organization wait for a challenge from their leader before they will cooperate for the work. So, as a leader, be consistent in challenging your people to let them know that you are that serious of your endeavor to finish the project or any goal of a group. So dapat ang isa ka leader ingana siya, no consistens siya, no sa iyahang tinguha ng ma-achieve ang isa ka project pa or isa ka goal para sa group. Okay. Ikaduha usap, a leader ought to motivate the people. Si i-motivate niya ang iyahang mga katawan or iyahang mga sakop. So mahihimbalo kita sa uban, some manager used to give incentives to the performing staff. No, then mga manager, okay, kumahimo niyo na, dun ay quota, kumahimo niyo na, dun ay incentives. Sumuna ang pag-motivate nila para motrabaho sila ugmayo. So iyan na ang ginahimo usap ang mga managers. Okay, sa eskwelahan, some teachers promise to add points to the competent student. Mababala ang ginahimo, pag-motivate, sige, dun na kay point, nodugang sa imuhanga grado. And then, ang upampod ng mga leaders mo ni, some leaders motivate their members concerning the lasting effect of what they are doing. Sabi ingon dahil ang leaders nga, himoon niyo na kay dilig ramana para sa inyuha, para na siyang mga anak, para sa mga next generation ang makabeneviti anak. Siguro kita, murag dilig pa ni sa ato ang panahon. No, pero kita may naakaron, himoon ta ni, ang ato ang goal is para sa mga anak, sa mga mga sunod ng mga henerasyon. So ano ang pag-motivate no sa ka leader, para sa isa ka butang nga ma-achieve. So, mo na getawag ang cooperation. Sa leader dapat siya influential, o dapat siya maayaw mo-motivate si iyahang mga sakop. Okay, therefore, motivating and influencing people is very important factors to let people see their worth, no? Murag makita sa mga tao nga, oh, 'yan hindi ko ka importante. No, anong ano ginachallenge ako, anong ginahagit man di ko nga, himoon na ni, sa topa importante na ikaw. So ang pag-motivate, ang pag-influence ang mga tao, so sa ka leader, dihan na makita nga, ah importante na ikaw. Dun na ko na ikaw ugpart sa kininga grupo, mo na makapa-motivate si ilaha. So, a leader, kinalan influential, yang maayaw siya mag-motivate. So that is cooperation. Now, ato tas ginatwag na collaboration. Kasi mga collaboration, mukini, collaboration requires initiative, no? Sa sa ka memberiha, no sa sa ka grupo, kung mayun ko nga, collaboration na initiative ah. Ang tao, ingon pa ko sa kong sarili, kung ako dun ay school, dun ako eskwelahan, dun ay subject akong idugang, how to develop initiative and common sense. Kaya murag mo ni nangawala karoon. No, ang mga tao karalim na mga bata, tungo kay murag na eh, kaaligang words, sige lagduko, doko, na silang cellphone, murag mga lutang ba, murag mga lutang. So wala na initiative, wala na common sense, wala na, diba? So ang ginatawag nga essence of collaboration murag wala. So kasi may collaboration, collaboration. Now, after the people are being influenced and motivated, first, everyone gladly presents himself for the work. Diba ka na mga tao kula, wakakabaloba nga, ako mo na eh ni siya, collaborator na, ka na maingon bitaw nga, hello ma'am, hello sir. Kasi ako'y ikatabang, kasi ako'y ikatabang dere. Mo na collaborator nga tao. Di na sa galantao ano, ah mo ba, sila hot ng hulat nun og ingnon, ah mo si mo, magusap mo sultean ako god. Di na siya sultean, mo presensya, sir, ma'am, kasi ako'y ikatabang. Mo na'y taong collaborator, no, iyahang ipresent yang kaugalingon alang sa pagtabang. How can I help you ma'am, sir, or, sige ma'am, just call my name. No, if you need me, just call my name, and I'll be there. Mo na getawag ang mga tao nga, collaborator, kinalan ko, kung isa ako'y ikatabang, ready na ko. Inot no, kung iyan na ang ginatawag nga isa ka tao. Okay, a collaborator ng isa ka tao, no nga, mo na yang attitude, a collaborator always find ways how to become a great help in the organization. Mangita siya ug pamaagi, paano siya magiging katabang or dako nga tabang sa grupo or sa organization. And then, a collaborator is observant of what is going on in the project. Kung ka musta naman ang project, okay na ba, kasi may kulang ano eh, no, malang tao siya dito, no dilig kay magkritisize siya kung dilig, ah mo na kulang, so dapat ako ni himoon, kanang unsa iyang ikatabang, no, sa mga kalihukan o sa mga project, numulantao siya. No, dilig siya mang bulabog, kung dilig, lantao niya, kasi kulang o kung ang iyahang sarili mo oy, makatabang, mo himo siya, bisan dilig pa sa ingnon. Bisan dilig pa si i-challenge, mo himo na siya, kaya nga naman, na feel niya nga part siya sa grupo o part siya sa organization. Okay, and letter B, everyone volunteers himself how to get the difficult work done. Okay, mo na'y mga collaborators, no? Matag-isa sa ilaha, mo volunteer sa iyahang kaugalingon, o makita niya unsa kalisod ang trabaho, mo presensya, mo volunteer siya. Yes, a collaborator actually places his feet on the shoes of others. Mukini ang taong collaborators. Meaning, dilig lang kay gasimpatize sila, si isa ka tao, kung dilig mo, emphasize sila. Buta basabot, so kung makita niyo diha, kanagi highlight na ko, giboold ka na word nga vicarious. Vicariously experiencing the feelings, thoughts, and experiences of others. Kasi what's a vicarious? Vicar. Iyahang ibutlang iyang sarili, no, anang dapita. Buta basabot, iyahang isuot ang iyang tiel ng to sa pato sa uban, kasi may ginabibik, uy, di ba sa basta? No, dilig lang siya kamingo nga, luoy taon, luoy yan, ano, sympathize ramana, luoy no, agasimpatize ko, pero iyahag 'yung adtoon, iyahag 'yung, no, ka na uban sa mga namatyan, no, dilig lang kay luoy no, pero ang pamilya adtoon ko niya, iyahang i-hag niya, muhilax and appeal, tabangan niya, ibutlang iyang sarili nga, siyapod, kaparte. So iyan na ang mga collaborators nga mga tao. Vicariously experiencing the feelings, the thoughts, and experiences of others. And then, the collaborators love to volunteer. Kanada'y mga tao nga mo-volunteer ako, sige, mga collaborators na sila. Easy kay sila mo-volunteer, ang uban i-challenge pa ni mo, sino ikaw ba? Ah, dagdang pakainkuan, no, pero uban mo-volunteer, sige ako, collaborator na ng mga tao. Di na siya nga i-hagiton, kung dilig siya na kina-feel niya, nagkinahangalan siya. Okay, they don't like to be spectators only. No, ang mga collaborators nga mga tao, di sila gusto nga spectators lang, sige laglantao, kung dilig performer sila. Nami uban ba, naka-maay lang, kay matanaw, ano, pero siya na, ah dilig lang, tanaw lang sila. So ang mga collaborators dilig sila spectators lang, kung dilig performer sila. And, they don't want to wait for the event, but they are event makers. Dilig lang sila, dilig lang sila, naghulat kasi panghitabo, kung dilig sila'y mo-himo og panghitabo. Mo na ang collaborators. So mga, kung ano mga, mga active sila, di sila passive. So kung atong i-analis pagayo, ang kining mga tao nga i-challenge pa to cooperate, mga tao na nga mga passive. Pero kining mga tao nga di na-ingnon, mo-volunteer sila, mo na'y mga, mga getawag nga active, or collaborators. They don't want to wait for the event, but they are event makers. Question, who do you think you are? Cooperator or collaborator? Ditto cooperator ha, kanyang operator nga, cooperator is cooperator, cooperator. Ako ang gi-lantao ang kuwan, no, ako ang gi, kuwan ang dictionary, og sa Google kung na by cooperator, na naraming good eye. No, ka na, mo-cooperate siya ba, pero kinalan og challenge pa, kasi mo-cooperate. So, paminan mo, kasi kaklase nga pagka-tao, cooperator o kira kayo pod, diba? Or collaborator ka. So iba ma kuwan ba, kanan na'y mga panghitabo, uy, may panghitabo din na, di ba dun ay mga tao nga, halam, mo tawag ka na, di, mo na'y mga collaborator, unsa ilang mahimo sa kanang panghitabo. O contribute ka ba, ka na, kasi pagka-kuwan ba, mo na mga kuwan, mo na mga collaborator, ang uban, awla lang, wad'yo kakatabang, awala mo, waw mapukuing na god. Mo na'y mga passive. Okay, so hinaut nga, no, marrealize na'to, nakita, hugas ata, kung narata sa getawag nga, hulat na'ti i-challenge, okay po na siya, kay ready raman poka, pero mas maipod, no, ma-upgrade na'to atong kaugalingon, di ko mapabilin sa cooperator lamang, kundi gusto ko maging collaborator yun. So challenge yourself, no, kasi hay, dun ay isa kabutang panghitabo, no nga, kasi maulaw ka mo-present. Pero, kung kita niya mga kinahangalan ka sa mga panghitabo, makatabang kaugla ko, then gone. Kuwan ka, ka na ang act as collaborator, ano ang panghitabo nga mahimo kang kasi ka dako nga tabang. Okay, so, dinhe, sa tua, dere sa getawag nga, dere sa LGU family, so laylahay ang mga getawag nga personality sa tao. So dun na po'y mga tao nga kuwan, no, maski sa tua, reserve ba ko nga tao. Dun ay isa kabutang diha nga ginahimo, ano na perform diha, may arap ko nga, okay, kabalo ramo poka na, pero dilig kumupresent ka, kabalo po ko, kabalo po ko, diba? Pero na'yo uban nga, mo kuwan sila nga, mo-volunteer sila, ako ako, gusto ko na. No, dun na'y mga tao nga reserve rapod. Pero depende si panghitabo, kung ka na ni-dagid bitaw kayo, ayaw po niyo nga, magkukain na. Kung dilig ikaw na'y mo-volunteer kaya naman, kinahangalan ka anang panahon na sa isa ka panghitabo. Dun na di disgrasya din ha, ikaw na adhiha sa acto, kasi may mahimo. Tawag tag pulis na, kuwan ka di ako si'ng mahimo, tawag di tanan, kasi may mahimo anang tungura, no? Dilig lang kay, wala lang 'yung kay gahimo, so that is kuwan, no dilig siya maayaw nga, getawag nga attitude, kung dilig active ka, ano ang panghitabo. Okay, so, tungo kay, mo na'y ibalik na ko, sige sori, Apusol Pablo, being like-minded, having the same love, being one spirit and purpose, or work toward common goal. So kitang tanan, kanadre karoon, kasi tong gahimo, is a common goal, no? Pag-serbisyo sa mga tao, og sa padahinga progress ato ang municipality, that is our goal nga. Atong i-challenge ka, wala mo sa kuhahe, wala mo sa lungat, kung dilig isano ang direksyon. But, mo na'y atong tinguha, no, sa matag-isa ka na'to. Hinaut nga, kitang tanan, no, mo kuwan ta, ginatawag nga, ah mamahimutang collaborators, no, sa ato ang kuwan, no, sa atong organization, dilig lang kay dere, sa tong pamilya, sa tong, diha sa tong church, sa mga community, tanan ta, kay para magiging hapsai, orderly ang ato ang pag-relate sa mga tao nga na sa ato ang palibot. Okay, so, dihan ang kotob no, ato ang lesson karoon, hinaut nga, dun na kay na learn ng mga lesson, may tagod ini, og atong i-apply sa ato ang kaugalingon, og maka-challenge butang ato sa uban. Okay. Ah, gawas kung dun ay ika-contribute kusap, kung dun ay mo-collaborate pod, no? Mo-react sa ato ang kuwan karoon, sa ato ang lesson nga, ako limited ramang ko, sige na po inyo ang ika-kuwan, ika-contribute about ini. Imo mang experience sa mga panghitabo, nga nahimo kang dako, kaying katabang, no? Ngatungo ni mo, kano ingon bitaw ka, mga uban si mo nga, nahimo d'yo kang anghel, no? Hulog ka ng langit, diba? Wad'ba nahimo kang blessing, ano ang mga tao nga nahimo blessing, collaborator na. Nahimo silang anghel, no, nalipay kayo ng hingtungan, mo na sila. So, in one or another, naka-experience na ni Ana, no dagha ang mga tao nga nagpasalamat sa tua, padayon. Padayon na siya, no, kay, after all, ang ato ang purpose, sa tong pagkinabi, tawag nga ministering one another. Sa sunod na'to nga lesson, no, ato ang hisgutan nga, ngaanong dilig man taparehas ang mga talents, ngaanong dilig man taparehas ang mga skills, no, ngaanong man, so ato ang mga hisgutan sa sunod, no? Laylahay, imuhalahay ako, lahay po na kuwan, lahay Ana, tanan, dun ay parehas, pero dilig, sama ang degree, dilig sama ang degree Ana. Okay, siya maayaw makakanta, makakanta man siya, pero kini mas maayaw yun, so ngaanong dilig man parehas. Okay, dun na'y mga purpose nga sama ni Ana. Sige, let us close in the word of prayer. Let's pray. Thank you oh God for the lesson we have learned this morning. Thank you oh God for the opportunity, day by day, we have opportunity to help other people. And sometimes oh Lord, in an incident oh Lord, ah, you give us such opportunity, how we can help other people, especially these, those needy people oh God, around us. We pray that you may fill us with your blessing oh God, and make us blessing oh Lord to the people around. Continue to work in our lives, continue to work in our family, continue to work in our community, and in this LGU family oh God. We pray that our mind, all of us will be ah like-minded, having the same love and being one spirit and purpose oh God. Continue to bless Lord your people, especially the legislators who are going to have their session today. I pray oh Lord that your divine wisdom will be upon each one of them. And we pray even for the visitors that we have this morning. We pray that their need oh God will be addressed also Father. And continue to bless all the departments of this LGU and all the pellinis oh God. We claim your divine protection day by day, and your abundant provisions for your glory and honor in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen. God bless and good morning.
I'd like to request everybody to please rise. As we welcome the the maes together with the presiding officer Honorable Anamel Oligario and the secretary to the San Bonning Bayan Estilita Silvano Igia.
Good morning, our 12 regular session is here Michael to order.
Nakababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Tayang pag-ili, perusta sila naman. Halaw niya bruusu, sahing ni po'y kumain. Kupang ni diba, duwag na ang mahiti. Savan ni rupi, diba pa sisihin? Sa nana ba't bruusu sila lang, sa nani kong baba? Ay di na dam, tu'at ka, sa'tan tayang ni naamalan. Ang isak lang, 'yung atawan, duwag ang kumain, 'yan na kiliho. Ang ito pin, 'yung atawan, 'yan na, 'yung may liba kiliho. Kusara halaw na, kuwan na ni pa'se'tan. Dwe na ni, sa kiliho. Ang may taya na, kuwan na ni. Ang ma'tay na, 'yan na sayo.
Maybe ask our secretary, Colonel Garo, please.
Hello. Okay, good morning to each and everyone. Welcome to the 12 regular session. Present for today's regular session, Madam Chair, the following. The Honorable Vice Mayor Anamel Oligario, Honorable Glenn Ian Sabihoon, we have Honorable Sharif Mazin Hasim, Honorable Dayan Catalunya, Honorable Eric Alibutdan, Honorable Janelle Borner Andalahau, Honorable Elias Langpalan, Honorable Joel Eboll, Honorable Alkurisa, Alberto Alkurisa Junior, Honorable Triximal Palalon, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario, and we have Honorable Alapid Muhammad. On record order eight, madam, we are in quorum.
Since we are in a cor- in quorum, so let's proceed to the adoption of the Order of Business. Madam Secretary.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the Order of Business for today's session.
Next second.
Second.
It's being seconded. Visitor's hour, manapka.
Actually, Madam Chair, I have, yesterday I tried to invite the manager of Land Bank to appear in the regular session for today uh, to shed light on some uh, issues related to a proposed memorandum of agreement between LGU EPL and Land Bank. However, I have not seen the uh, manager of Land Bank uh, at this point in time, so perhaps you will be arriving anytime. Uh, Madam Chair, thank you. And also, Madam Chair, I am reminded uh, I'd like to request one of the staff to also invite to the session today, considering that we are still in the visitors' hour. Uh, the at least four former employees of the licensing office to shed light on some uh, issues, Madam Chair, related to the operation of the licensing office uh, in the past few months, Madam Chair. So, uh, I would like to request uh, uh, one of the members of the uh, the uh, Sergeant at Arms, Nabata Sergeant at Arms, right? To uh, invite those people uh, in the session today. And uh, Madam Chair, if the head of office of the licensing office, uh, if he is around, uh, I'd like to also uh, request him to be, to appear in the session this morning, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. First privilege hour. While waiting, let's go to the our fun, privilege hour. Who wants to appear in the privilege hour? So, reading and approval, na naman?
Sigil.
So let's proceed with the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session, any second.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, considering that we are already uh, being provided with the, the minutes of the previous session, I move uh, to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session, Madam Chair.
Any second.
Second.
It's being seconded. Reference of business, Madam Secretary, the proposed ordinance. Move with approval. Move with approval of the minutes.
I so move, Madam Chair, approving the minutes of the previous session.
Okay, it's being seconded by Honorable.
Second.
Reference of business, Madam Secretary.
Okay, for so business. Uh, under proposed ordinance, we have draft ordinance number 019, sponsored by Honorable Joel Eboll, an ordinance granting amnesty to delinquent leases tenants of local government-owned stalls at EPL Public Market by waiving their penalties or charges and interest until December 31, 2025.
Committee on Rules.
Under other communications, we have here the SK annual budget for CY 2025 of Barangay Lobby and SK supplemental budget number one of Barangay Lower Itil Heights.
Approve question.
Item B, we have the application for accreditation of Gituan Hag Racers Association.
Committee on Rules.
Item C, duly endorsed municipal mayor is the recommendation of the municipal engineer on the project opening of access road at Timalang Puting Batu Tumaasin under the contact, contract of ACR Buildway and Construction. As the project is advancing, the contractor encountered a very steep slope and sandy soil at the said area. As a result, it was agreed that the said project be discontinued. Since this project may cause terrible danger to the downhill residents and great environmental hazards and entail additional funds, the mayor is requesting for resolution recommending for the termination of the said project. The mayor is requesting for its urgency.
Honorable Alkurisa.
Yes, uh, considering that this being considered as urgent by the municipal mayor himself, uh, for uh, so that this will be discussed properly, I therefore move, Madam Chair, uh, approving the request of the municipal mayor, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, uh, to terminate the project, uh, the opening of access road at Timalang Puting Batu Tumaasin under the ACR Buildway and Construction, Madam Chair.
As a resolution.
That's a, a resolution, Madam Chair.
In a second. One second. It's being seconded, discussion, objection, or having none, motion is served by approve.
Okay, item D, duly endorsed from the mayor is a copy of the flame moas to be entered into by and between LGEPL and number one, we have the Department of Agriculture, National Meat Inspection Service, two, Dr. Henry Devilla Hospital as service provider of LGU, M. Simone Hospital as service provider, ODJ Medical Diagnostic Clinic and Pharmacy as service provider of LGU, Montoya Dental Clinic and FB Pharmacy as service provider.
Committee on Rules.
Item E, we have here uh, the duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, the inspection report conducted by the disposal committee on the unserviceable equipment of LGEPL. The mayor is requesting for a resolution authorizing him to formally dispose the following unserviceable equipments, properties for the auction, for auction through public bidding. We have one up to 22, dump truck, garbage truck, dump truck, road grader, grader engineering, road roller, baco excavator, bulldozer, garbage truck compactor, bongo buck to buck white, ambulance van white, rescue van vehicle white, multi cab under the assessor, multi cab under the mayor's office, multi cab under the engineering, and we have the uh, pickup, Hilux, and multi cab sa PNPAY.
Okay, as a resolution.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, considering that the mayor is asking for a resolution giving him authority to dispose the following unserviceable equipment and properties, uh, I'd like to propose a resolution again, Madam Chair, but first, I would like to just get the confirmation from the engineering office. So can we invite somebody from the engineering office to shed light at least before we pass the resolution, Madam Chair?
Actually, kaning mga kuwan na dugay na nangin.
Dugay na kinin.
Sa mga previous mayors, paning uban aning.
Ana ba?
Yes.
How, anyway, if uh, the former mayor herself, now the presiding officer can attest to the uh, the following equipments that are already considered, considered as unserviceable, then I therefore move, Madam Chair, for a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, to formally dispose the mentioned uh, 22 items and verse, unserviceable equipment and properties for public auction and bid, public bidding, Madam Chair.
Next second.
Second.
It's being seconded. Discussion, objection, motion is served by approve.
Under item F, duly endorsed from the municipal mayor's the request of the Eldrim for the amendment of Esbera Resolution Number 08-063-2025, approving, approved last August 2025, particularly the amount from 27,0435,492.95 to 28,76,570.05. Approval of the Eldrim Fund for 2026, this is due to the increase in the NTA.
Approve question. Letter G.
Item G, duly endorsed from the municipal mayor's the letter from Dr. Agbayani Municipal Government Assistant Department Head One under the municipal health office concerning his application for the graduate studies as visiting student to search at the University of Calgary, Canada for the period January 6, 2026 to April 30, 2026, requesting for a resolution allowing allowing him to avail the said program.
Madam Chair, I would like to request the chairman on the Committee on Health to pass the resolution, if ever. Item G, we authorize Dr. Agbayani to go on further study in the United States.
Canada.
Canada, Canada.
Canada.
Canada. Madam Chair, I already talked with Dr. Earl regarding this matter, and I believe that this was also forwarded to the HR. So may we also know as to the feedback on what is the the output from the HR's office regarding this matter. On the side of the health, we have no contraindication as to allowing him because this is continuing medical education. But on this side of the HR, we'd like to know on sa inahang feedback.
Ah, Madam Chair.
Maybe we can just invite the, ano, the head, department head.
The department head.
Yes, Human Resource.
Ah, I have seen here, Madam Chair, in the visitor's waiting area, Ms. Merly, is she from? Ah, Licensing Office, ah, okay. So we request somebody from the Secretariat to please invite the Human Resource Department Head. Okay. And for the meantime, we will give the floor to our visitor, Ma Merly. Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules, Madam Chair, to accommodate our visitor, Ms. Merly.
In a second, put a suspension of the rules. Seconded. Okay, Madam Merly, asa, asang head.
Um, travel siya ma.
Ang katung upat po nggi invite.
Ah, absent.
Present sila gahapon.
Yes, ma.
So karoon absent sila, kagi invite sila.
Po po sila to, murag wala sila knowledge na.
Na, nagpadalawig invitation. Wala gidawan? O sila ang nag receive and then wala sila mutunga. So nagkai sila. So, okay, maybe we, ah, we'll just invite them again next week?
Madam Chair.
With the department head.
Oh, okay, that will be okay, but my, my take to the situation, Madam Chair, is quite different. We have already seen a lot of, you know, incidents of what we call this, dishonesty inside the office of the licensing. And in fact, in front of the two of us.
Yes.
The four boys admitted of their wrongdoings right in front of the vice mayor herself and this representation, Madam Chair. I remember that you invited me to your, to your, to your office, o dito sa imo balay di ay. And the four concerned employees, JOs, job orders of the licensing office were there. And you can, both of us, we can attest to the admission of the four of their wrongdoings. Madam Chair, pwede pa ba degi hapon sila magpadayon ug trabaho? Considering that there are already findings.
Well, it's up to the mayor. It's up to the mayor.
Oh, that's my question, Madam Chair.
Yeah, it's up to the mayor. So since ilamagin ang gi, gi sulte, gi admit na nila nga, naghimo sila ug mga peke nga taripa. So once naghimo sila peke nga taripa, ang akong signature, ilapung gi, so, ilapung gi. For its akong signature.
Geport ang imong signature.
Yes. Kana ilang gi kuwan, gi accept na nila in front ng mutoha ni Alcoriza. So now, ang akong gusto kaling himoon karoon, no? Kuaon na to mga taripa, kena ma game master kaya na pagpa-identify sa signature kung ako aba o dili, diba? Actually, ang utimo, maski atong mayor, wala pa siya maglingkod as mayor, ipapirma po nila. Ug peke nga taripa. So lisod po kayo mo, mo bumirang sa atuatanan ang ilang mga gitang himo. So that's why we would like to invite them again next week, ang katung upat with the department head. Okay, actually si Ma Merly, dili siya cancer. Okay, she was assigned sa treasury. Bang unang siya gibalik sa licensing. So dili siya cancer, anak.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. As a, ma, nakain idea of how many complaints itong sa taripa?
So far... So, there are ten.
Ten.
More than ten.
More than ten complaints?
Yes.
Pero on sa ing complaint na tama?
Ang kahabitan, naghapon silang kuwarta, murag nagpixa sila.
Okay.
They acted as fixtures.
Ilalang atangan sa gawas. Murag ala ako makuha ng idea sa ila karoon. So far, no, kay dilim ako kabalotong kleyos. Ang akong na, ang akong na, na karoon nga ta, since July, starting July, napay na kahimo. Which is, ang isa ka klayman is si Mr. Baruro from Timalang. Ilalang kasi atangan sa lobby.
But I heard na, na daw franchise daw na, isa ka franchise, lima ka mukha ya? Is that true?
Wala pa ko kukuha ng lima, but two. One franchise, two owners.
Thank you, ma, thank you.
So far na amikat tunggang Mr. Barcello, Edgar Barcello, ma'ko siya nakasign si mayor, as vice mayor pa siya is May 10. Napuy, nasurrender dili na mga ah, amugikuha dili ma. Karang ilang taripa, ilang pankisa. Na sign, nakasign si Mayor Rambo ani. And pak wala siya designation ano yung from May 10, 2025. Wala siya. What siya designation nga, acting siya, pero ang nakabutang dili, municipal mayor. Siya'y nakasign. Di sila, di panusot ako nila.
Ah, Madam Chair.
Actually, ma, wala sa mong record.
Wala pa git sa inyong record?
Pabrikated.
Ah, Madam Chair, considering that we have invited the head of office of the Human Resource in the person of Ms. Zenny, in relation to this, Madam Chair, can I ask from Ms. Zenny, with all the evidences that we have? Ma'am Zen, please. With all the evidences that we have against a few people from the licensing office, as of yesterday, in fact, according to Ms. Merly, these involved persons still reported to work. My concern is, if we allow these people to continue reporting to their office, they can still do their, you know, their, 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 their things, you know? And my question is, as HR, can we put them under preventive suspension?
Good morning, yes, sir.
Considering that they are just job orders? Or can we immediately cancel their ah, ah, job order, sign the contracts?
Ah, pwede siya certain tangon dahil sila through a memorandum terminating their engagement sa LGU since wala man sila employer-employee relationship.
So who will sign the memorandum? It should be the mayor. Okay. So...
Amo lagi? Di lang sila upat, daghan pa.
So I would like to request the municipal mayor to take the appropriate action against these people. Four, five, six, I, I don't, I don't care. Sila tanan will be put under preventive suspension.
If I may, sir, I believe na inform na ang head na dili na sila parreport on.
Pero kay nagreport pa daw gahapon.
Ang accountable, ano, sir, kisay nagparreport sa ilahaman.
But there should be a formal executive order.
Ngayon ipahunong nagyod ang ilang services sa atuak, kay, murag dili na maginamaayos siguro.
And they themselves admitted that in, right in front of this representation and the honorable vice mayor. And even to the honorable mayor, because after our meeting, the following day, I brought this, at least four guys to the residence of the honorable mayor Rambo Oligario. And the honorable Rambo Oligario even advised them to put their, ah, what we call this, because they have also allegations against their head. And so the request of the mayor was to put all of those sentiments into, into proper, ah, what we call this? Yes, and it should be, in fact, I even visited one law office already for that purpose. But they did not appear by the time that we were about to visit a law office. Katung upat ka mga lalaki. So, si mayor kabalo gitanan, gi admit na nila. Og, atubangan ni mayor, naingon sila nga, "Yes, mayor, we are willing nga muhimo mi, ug mo ang affidavit, nga firmahan sa usak abugado, silyuhan sa abugado." Pagkahapon, nga dadunan ako sila sa opisina sa abugado, kay para say lang affidavit, wala na sila nagpakita. Og dili na daw sila moan do. Ni text sa ako ah, dili na daw sila. So I think the mayor has to do something at this point in time, Madam Chair. Sila gani mismo, ni snab sa atuang request, nga sila pay gusto unta gani. Dahil eventually, they snab as gisnaban nila ang konsihal, gisnaban nila ang vice mayor, ug labaw sa tanan ang mayor, ilang gisnaban.
Yeah, so maybe we can invite them next session kung mutunga sila.
Yes.
What do you think?
We will just put that invitation on record, Madam Chair, so that if ever do na tay mga action against them nagyod, nateklaro nga recording kapila na to sila gi invite.
Okay. So again.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the, ano, letter G about ang Dr. Juan Agbayani. No, no, no.
Ah, you, you please stay. Ah, the honorable Diane Catalunya will have the floor.
Yes, good morning, Ma'am Zen.
Good morning.
Um, this, we requested for your presence today because I believe that you and Dr. Earl Agbayani talk regarding his supposed education leave this coming 2026 from the period of January to April. So may we also know on the side of the HR as to what are your comments regarding this matter?
Regarding the application of Dr. Agbayani for study leave, I have referred the same to the director of the Civil Service Commission. He advised that I can look into executive order, ah, 329 yang gi mention, pero nangita ko executive order number 329, wala siya, baka 129 as to official time. But according to Attorney Kunting, the director of the Civil Service, ang study leave mango daw is to complete a masteral. Supposedly, once ma, ma, ma complete niya ang iyahang study, is, mo graduate na siya sa masteral. And Dr. Agbayani informed me nga part sa iyahang thesis ang maong research study. So mas gi consider namo siya as study leave, which is, ah, in our view nga mas applicable siya kay Dr. Agbayani. But gi tan opo namo ang katung gi recommend ni Attorney Kunting ah, official time. Ah, mas tedious siya kay na siya mga approval from a higher agency. So ang mo, mo, ma, mas applicable kay kuwan ang study leave okay siya, kay mo kom, ah, part of the thesis niya ang maong study. Study, research, mantu yan tawag.
Yes, regarding the timeframe unto the time he will be, unto the number of days that he will be out from work here sa Philippines. Wala wantay problemaan regarding sa iyang employment, no? Because we also want to assure him na he have a job to come back.
Ah, continue ang iyahang employment with the LGU during sa iyahang study leave. In fact, na siya i required service, ah, na siya i render nga equivalent or proportion sa iyahang gi, ah, avail nga study leave, period of study leave na siya i required service to render po sa LGU o nang naa mag-prepare moa.
Ah, okay, so you have a memorandum of agreement regarding the payback for the said CME, no? We call it CME man sa.
Service requirement ang terms sa period of nga kinahalan, mustache siya with the LGU.
Ah, okay, okay. But I think he is, um, he is on permanent item.
Yes, permanent.
Yeah.
Oh, department head one.
Yes, permanent item.
Assistant department.
Assistant department head, yeah.
Okay. Um, any, anything else, Ma'am Zen? Wala na?
Ah, iga-process pa mi sa iyahang moa, sa iyang memorandum to be endorsed po sir today for the authority of the mayor to sign the same.
Ah, okay. So on our end, we can already push through with the resolution, regardless, ah, wala pa ang moa?
Yes.
Okay, that would be.
Pwede, pwede, oh, we'll just wait for the moa.
Authority po the mayor is different katung, authorizing the mayor to sign the moa with Dr. Agbayani.
I think we have to wait for the moa.
Yeah, that's, that's what I asked, Ma'am Zenny. If can we push through with the resolution without the moa? Then, diba, mona kung di ask just now.
Abi na ko namo ilahing resolution to.
The resolution here is for him, for us, to allow him to avail of the program. So.
It will be a different resolution, ma, to allow him and another resolution to authorize the mayor.
To authorize the mayor, yeah.
And approve the.
So okay lang, the moa will come later and then we will just push through with the resolution, allowing him to avail of the program. Okay, thank you, Ma'am Zen.
Madam, Madam Zen.
Yes.
Three months ko mawala, may vice mayor pa ko mabalik. Magfile ako leave.
Ah, vacation leave.
On sa mga requirements na ko.
Ah, ang authority from the mayor approved siya. Then was clearance, ma, since more than 30 days, ang vacation leave.
Okay. Sige, thank you, Ma'am Zen.
Ah, thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, ah, with that feedback from our HR head, I move for a resolution allowing Dr. Earl Faris Martin Agbayani to avail of the visiting student researcher program at the University of Calgary, Canada for a period of January 6, 2026 to April 30, 2026. I so move, Madam Chair.
In a second, put a approval.
A second, Madam Chair.
Seconded. One second then. Discussion, objection, they're having none, motion in surveying room.
Uh, Madam Chair, I think, uh... We already have the presence of the, uh, good manager of Land Bank, uh... Of the Philippines EPL branch. Uh... Can we give her some time to... Because I have some questions regarding... In fact, I am preparing a committee report uh, about, uh, a proposed memorandum of agreement that the mayor is about to sign with Land Bank uh, in a particular program of Land Bank called Land Bank Link that Biz Portal. So can we allow the, uh, manager to enlighten us somehow, Madam Chair?
Ma'am?
So with that, Madam Chair, I again-
Let's acknowledge first Honorable Trixie and Honorable Ebor.
Okay. Yes, Manager?
Yes.
To our Presiding Officer, Honorable Vice Mayor, uh, Anamel Oligario. To our honorable counselors for LGU EPL, good morning. I am Marie Claudette Maligro, the Branch Head of Land Bank EPL Branch. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the digital banking solutions of Land Bank, particularly the Link Biz Portal, our online payment facility that can facilitate is in fund collection. Before I proceed to my main presentation, let me share to you the related laws and issuances to the government's trust for digitization. First, the E-commerce Act of 2000, the Department of Finance and DTI JDAO adoption of electronic payment and collection system on 2010, the COA circular guidelines on electronic official receipt on 2013, the ease of doing business issued on 2017, the ARTA memo circular guidelines on reinstitution of permits and licenses under the new normal for 2020, the COA circular guidelines on electronic payments and collections on 2021, EO number 170, adoption of digital payments for government disbursements and collections on 2022, the SONA directive of our President Marcos on 2023 mandated government agencies to immediately digitalize their vital frontline services and backend functions. Digitalization is the call of today, not the future, but of the present. It is here, it is needed, and it is needed today. This is the mandate of our government. We at Land Bank would like to partner with you in your digital transformation journey. We hope to help effectively shift the institution from the current, the current state or the manual transactions to desired state, the electronic transactions. So from traditional nga manual, padong natasa electronic transactions, electronically enable the institution to improve delivery services. This contribute to your compliance with the government's mandate on the digitization of government transactions as stated in Executive Order number 170, Series of 2022, or the adoption of digital payments for government disbursement and collection. This is applicable to LGU and other government clients. To provide you an overview of presentation, I will be discussing the Link Biz features and types of enrollment, the merchant payment inquiry, the benefits, the utilization, and the documentary requirements. Link Biz Portal stands for LBP. It is an online collection facility available to our government and private clients. The features of Link Biz Portal, this is available seven days a week, except during scheduled system maintenance time, hence your collection office is open even when your brick and mortar office is not. This provides your clients the convenience of paying to you even after office hours, during weekends, and even on holidays or office suspension declarations. So bisag naarata sa atong balay, bisag holiday, makapeta sa atong mga obligations, sa atong mga taxes. With the Link Biz Portal, your customers or payers will have a cost-efficient and convenient payment experience online or off-site. Ang bayaran ani sa kaning sa Link Biz Portal, kung mag-access ta, uh, 7 pesos lang, as low as 7 pesos ang service fee. So instead nga moan hita sa office, kay magbayad, magpasahe. Oo, minimum of 15 pesos man siguro atong pasahe di rekonseha. At 20. Gikan sa, sa proper, EPL proper. It has the ability to handle small and large value payments. It does not only accept Land Bank accounts for payments, but has a wide array of payment collections, which I will discuss in detail in later in my presentation. It also has a facility which will allow you as merchant to view, download, print, and successful, print successfully the payments. You may also customize your transaction types and field requirements based on your needs. As of March 2025, there are already 2,010 merchants in our Link Biz Portal. These include national government agencies, LGUs, schools, and universities, and utility companies such as electric operatives, water districts, telco, and cable providers. For Sambuanga Sibugay, we have already onboarded Sam Soreko II and the EPL Taita Water District. For the LGUs, we have also an onboarded last year, LGU Naga and LGU Taita. Hopefully, we can onboard the LGU EPL this year. You can already pay through Land Bank Link Biz Portal your, uh, electric bills to Sam Soreko online. One of the competitive advantages of the Link Biz Portal is its wide array of payment options. With various payment options available to payers in the Link Biz Portal, the merchant can do away with the execution of bilateral agreements with multiple intermediaries such as banks, electronic money issuers, electronic payment gateway providers, and other private entities. LBP ATM card holders must be enrolled in iAccess to transact in the Link Biz Portal. Uh, are you familiar with the Land Bank iAccess? Our honorable counselors, Madam Chair? No?
This is my first time to hear that.
Uh, okay. Before we can... Yes, Ma, yes, Doc? Uh, you are enrolled? Thank you, Doc. For corporate clients who wish to pay merchants via the Link Biz Portal, they may open a corporate payment card, an institutional debit card that uses the ATM PIN model. Since institutional clients usually open passbook and checking accounts which are not eligible for use on online payment platforms. So meaning to say, uh, cards lang ang pwede ani, pwede ang passbook or checking account para sa online payment. Cards issued by other banks such as BPI, Union Bank, Asia United Bank, RCBC, Robinsons Bank, PS Bank, DBP may also be used when paying in the Link Biz Portal through the EGOV Pay via PCHC PayGate payment option. EGOV Pay is a payment solution that enables a streamlined digitalization of government collections and disbursements. Hence, it is only available to government Link Biz merchants. So I believe nga naanamoy, naanegihatag ang DCIT for you to be able to access the EGOV Pay. And relative to the nationwide implementation of the DICT EGOV Pay, wherein Land Bank shall serve as the settlement bank for EGOV Pay transactions and as bank administrator for the enrollment of clients, bank details in the EGOV Pay facility. Credit cards under the brands of Visa, Mastercard, and JCB may also be used as source accounts for Link Biz transactions. So dili lang di ay ang debit card, appeal pod ang credit card nga pwedinato magamit. Electronic or mobile wallets like Shopee Pay, Gcash, Pedipod, Maya, and Grab Pay may also be used as sources of payment in the Link Biz Portal. So this is not limited only to Land Bank cards. Your payers also have the option to pay in cash at our cash payment partners like Metro Bank, China Bank, BPI, Security Bank, 7-Eleven, SM Store, Robinsons, LBC, and Bayad Centers. The fees vary per payment option. For Visa, Mastercard, JCB, the fee will be determined based on the average ticket size of the merchant's collection. For Land Bank OF Bank, transaction amount, no limit, fee is 7 pesos only. For other banks, 17 pesos. Kung other bank inyo ang gamiton para sa Link Biz Portal, magpay mo 17 pesos. For credit cards, 30 pesos. For Gcash, Maya, Shopee Pay, 30 pesos. Muna siyang ma-convenience fee nga, ato ang, uh, bayaran kung magamita sa Land Bank Link Biz Portal. For settlement account, when does Land Bank credit the collected payments to the account of the merchant? It depends on the payment option used by the payer. Uh, dun na daba transactional website ang LGU EPL? Uh, so wala pa transactional website. Uh, dun naghihapuntay, uh, system nga para sa wala pa transactional website nga LGUs. Payments using Land Bank debit cards will be settled by batch at the end of the day, unless the transaction was made on weekend or holidays. If the transaction was made on weekend and holidays, the following banking day naasay ma-settle. For payments using other bank accounts, i-wallets, and cash settlement shall be made the next banking day, subject to cut-off period of the participating bank partners. For payers who will opt to use the cash payment option, the reference number is only valid for two days or 48-hour window for the payer to pay over the counter at their chose 7-Eleven. So there are three types of enrollments. Since LGU EPL has no transactional website, we can use the plug-and-play type of enrollment. Enrollment of merchant without transactional website, payer will go straight to Link Biz website to transact. Merchants without transactional website shall be enrolled under plug-and-play and the assumption is that the payer knows the amount to be paid as well as the other pertinent transaction details and would be paying online through the Link Biz Portal. What is a transactional website? This transactional website is capable of transmitting and receiving online instructions that will allow assessment, verification, and acceptance of payments that is necessary to fully integrate to the Link Biz Portal. And this includes e-billing, e-sowa, or online assessment. This prevents wrong data entry and allows automatic posting of collections. For the system walkthrough, we will have a separate, uh, presentation for the users if this will be, uh, onboarded. I, I have prepared a presentation, but since we don't have, uh...
Sige lang.
Sige lang. Okay lang, Konsihal. For the merchant payment inquiry, this will be accessed by your, uh, treasurer, municipal treasurer's office. This facility that allows merchants nominated users to inquire real-time download reports of successful payment transactions done by clients or payers. After a payment has been made, you will be able to view the details of the transaction in a real-time manner through the merchant payment inquiry. Your enrolled users may inquire, download, and print reports of payment transactions in the Link Biz Portal by logging into the MPI. There will also be a designated user for the merchant payment inquiry system. Your enrolled users could log into MPI by going to the Link Biz Portal and clicking the Merchant tab. The MPI users will, will then input the login credentials provided through their registered email address indicated in the merchant payment inquiry user enrollment form. The users may filter the transactions by date range, transaction type, status, and payment mode. We highly recommend that the reconciliation and downloading of printing of reports will be done on a daily basis to see any discrepancies. These are the benefits for the merchants. This prepares the institution for the new normal, improves delivery of services because payments are made more efficient and less time-consuming for the business and its customers. This mitigates risk inherent to manual handling of cash. For example, kanang ato ang mga collection di ri sa, sa LGU, dili na nato kinahanglan nga dalhun pa sa bangko, ang ma-mitigate nato ang risk. Ang risk sa pagtransport, pagtransport sa ato ang mga collections to the banks, kay diretso naman siya musulod sa accounts sa LGU. During the pandemic, the appreciation and adoption of cashless and online payments increased because of the restriction, limitation on face-to-face transactions. Land Bank was able to provide an alternative means for merchants to collect and for payers to settle their financial obligations. These are also the benefits for the payers. Relief from the hassle of queuing and over-the-counter payment at cashier's office, payment centers, or partner banks. Convenience as payment can be made anytime, anywhere. Basically, the institution's collection office is open for business seven days a week. Mitigation of risk inherent to manual handling of cash, for example, theft or loss. Lower transaction cost versus remittance deposit cost for payers residing outside the Philippines. So even if kanang ang mag-remit na asa laing lugar or outside the Philippines, pwede nagyod kaayo. Dili na kinahanglan nga muuli pa siya para isettle ang iyahang, uh, obligations sa ato ang LGU. To meet the minimum guaranteed transactions, these are the requirements per annum, subject to annual review thereafter as stated uh, here in our table. As previously mentioned, your enrollment in the Link Biz is free of charge, but there is a minimum guaranteed revenue per annum that you will be required to meet. For the first year, uh, wala pa siya gi-require nga guaranteed transaction. For the second year, 50 transactions. Pero I believe, uh, more than 50 mangyod ang matransact sa LGUs kay daghan magyod kaing mamayad sa tong business permit sa ato ang real property tax. So for the availability process, I already gave the, uh, template for the sanguniang, uh, resolutions, sanguniang pambayan resolution and I believe na ang matay Konsihal Alcoriza for evaluation. And that's all for my presentation. Let's get digital.
Yes.
So what's the pleasure of the august body? Ragwapo ni, tadiyak naman.
Actually, Madam Chair, my reaction is, wow, this is very timely. Uh, as we, you know, face some financial setbacks uh, in the licensing office. This will resolve everything. Uh, because this will cut the, you know, uh, the possibility of irregularities in the collection. And, uh, wala na'y mga middleman, wala na'y mo kuwan. Yes. Wala na. So, uh, this is very timely. The Lord is very good. So anyway, Ma'am Manager, in fact, the reason why I invited you here because I have already prepared my committee report for approval. But I just need your, uh, uh, information, additional information regarding this, uh, program. So it's very, uh, timely and, uh... Ang ngaya nagyod kayang ipil nga musulod ini. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in addition, I would also like to, uh... Inform the legislative body, Madam Chair, that the deployment of the ATM installation for LGU EPL Municipal Building will be, uh, made this year.
Oh, nice.
Despite the fact that your payroll facility was in DBP, but... Amo adyong gi-fight nga mabutangan o ATM di ri sa LGU EPL. And I am waiting for the report of the Municipal Engineer Carlito Kulankulan for the progress of the construction of the ATM booth.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ma'am.
Everything is good.
Answer prayer. That's an answer prayer, right?
Yes.
So I think you still have one more visitor. Yes, Honorable Ebor?
Madam Chair, we have, um, a very special visitor this morning, Madam Chair, from the BLGF. He is on official travel, uh, to Sambuanga Region 9. I mean, uh, uh, Sambuanga BLGF. And we only request him to drop by EPEL for some short meeting together with the local finance committee. Our visitor, Madam Chair, is Sir Alan C. Loy, our local Treasury Operations Officer for the BLGF Region 9. So, accompanied with our acting Municipal Treasurer, si Madam Gimpolmana. May I ask Madam Chair, Madam Treasurer, to completely introduce our visitor, Madam Chair? He is the boss of our treasurer.
Sir? You can say it.
Okay, Sir Alan.
Good morning. I'm Mr. Alan Loy from BLGF Region 9, Bureau of Local Government Finance. I was invited by the local finance committee together with members of the council to have the technical assistance on the business plans of the local economic enterprise of the LGU. This business plan and the... This business plan is used or very helpful for the local economic enterprise to be... to generate more income and also to help the LGEUs improve their services. So, hopefully, the LGU can... the BLGF can assist the LGU in drafting their business plan, possible project feasibility studies for new LEAs, and also the staffing patterns of the LGU. Yes, sir. And...
Madam Chair, actually, it has been a long, long time request of the Sangguniang Bayan. If I am not mistaken for the previous Sangguniang Bayan, they requested the Mido to prepare the business plan, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, until now, wala pa dyan na realize a business plan. And last week, I personally informed the Honorable Mayor na ingung ko dili dyan na kaya na to himoan ang business plan diri sa ato ang Mido and anybody else in the local government unit. So, why not make it a problem and harder for us to realize that business plan? So, siguro mo, hayan na lantao na og technical people para mo prepare na for the good of our local economic enterprises in the local government unit of EPEL. Because I believe we have three LEAs in the municipality. We have the market, the slaughterhouse, and the terminal. And these three LEAs has its separate local ordinances, Madam Chair. So, we are now in the process of realizing this business plan. Kaning tulog dyan ka, business plan. I understand... Sorry. I understand before that isa dyan dyan tsaka business plan sa atong LEAs, but individual business plan for every economic enterprise. Okay? So, we are now in the process, Madam Chair. Padulong na pa dito. Only that, the local government unit will now provide, collect all the data, dayon isubmit dito sa ato ang... ato ang... ato ang gi-planuhan nga mo-prepare aning business plan so that later on, pwidi siya ma-adapt na nato diri sa lungsod sa EPEL. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Honorable Ebon. So, siya atong bossan.
Consultant. Madam Chair.
So, I hope mapakasak na to, nagshad.
Madam Chair, I agree with the possible hiring of a consultant to prepare a business plan for the municipality of EPEL, considering that we are planning a lot of things for the municipality of EPEL. In fact, one thing that we should be preparing under the Mido also is the establishment of our Public Cemetery Number 2. We have a fully-loaded Public Cemetery Number 1 already. In fact, we have to thank the presence of a private cemetery here because without this private cemetery, I don't know what's the situation of our public cemetery at this point in time in the absence of a private cemetery. So, we are looking forward to establishing a Public Cemetery Number 2 that is very affordable to our people. Kung gusto sila nga mangita og kana na ang cemetery yong nga murapod og kana loan type, pwede na tong... kana may atong nasa... gi... lantaw-lantaw na to sa atong mayor. So, I think I would like to request that it should be included in our business plan.
For those that LEAs that is new or not existing, we need to prepare to... we need to prepare project feasibility study and also the business plan. But for the existing LEAs, only business plan is required to prepare.
Noted, noted.
In addition, Madam Chair, in addition, we have... we already discussed that cemetery during our short meeting. However, I would like to emphasize and let the Sangguniang Bayan know that we have the LGU Ridge, and that could be part unya sa ato ang... ato ang i-declare nga LEAs. So, it's a separate study, Madam Chair, as per mentioned by Sir Alan. Kaya maghimugin tag FS. We have that already, pero morag... naputol man to siguro, morag... wait, claro. And I reacted this morning together with the administrator na tingung ko siguro, morag lain na po siguro ang rate karoon. Kaya dugay naman to kayo. That was during our time, Madam Chair. Diba? So, today, this time, morag lahi-lahit na po siguro ang land valuation. So, it needs a thorough study, Madam Chair, in the preparation of the FS. That's all, Madam Chair.
That's why I asked Honorable Sabion to review our revenue code and amend some of that one sa mga rentals na to. So, thank you, Sir Alan.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sir Alan. We hope that you enjoyed your few minutes or few hours of stay in the municipal government of EPEL.
Not only that, huapulam ika lang breakfast.
Wala lagi takatilaw.
Nice like balbakuha.
Courtesy of Honorable Joel.
As usual, na balbakuha mo'y. So, let's proceed now to our committee report. It's always Honorable Alcoriza pinakadagdag committee report. So, I think Honorable Sabion.
Madam Chair, I have two committee reports, Madam Chair. Committee Report Number 115, letter request from Ms. Lorraine K. Lau Estrella for financial support to the Mr. Dave Lawrence Lau Estrella, participant of International Science Olympian Competition of Southeast Asia. Findings and recommendation the committee on appropriation to which was referred on the letter of request of Ms. Lorraine K. Lau Estrella, mother of Mr. Dave Lawrence Lau Estrella, resident of Barangay Populasyon, EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay, respectfully reports. The said request seeks the passage of resolution granting financial support to Mr. Dave Lawrence Lau Estrella, who was qualified to represent the Philippine team in the International Science Olympian Competition of Southeast Asia to be held inside of Osaka, Japan on December 19 to 20 to 20 to 25. Upon careful review of deliberation of the committee, finds merit of extending recognition and financial support to the said student for his astounding achievement for bringing honor to the municipality of EPEL. However, due to consideration of the budgetary guidelines and limitations, particularly in the proper use of public funds, the committee deems that appropriate... allowable only to the recommended granting of reward compensation. The committee hereby recommends for the adoption of a resolution approving of grant of support and reward for the said amount and will be the discretion of the municipal mayor. So, I move for the adoption of said committee report, Madam Chair.
In a second.
Second, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to pass a resolution approving the grant of support of the reward of said amount. I... No. A resolution approving of grant to support and reward and will be the discretion of the office of the mayor, Madam Chair.
In a second, for the approval of the resolution?
Second.
Seconded by Honorable Dankalan. Discussion, objection, or having motion, Mr. Barbo.
Committee Report Number... 105 and 106. Supplemental Budget Number 1 of calendar year 2025 of Barangay Logan and barangay sanito of amount of... Barangay Logan is 150,870 pesos and the barangay sanito of 2,435 pesos. Remarks and recommendation, the committee on appropriation to which was referred, the supplemental budget number 1, calendar year 2025 of Barangay Logan, sanito of the municipality for review and evaluation and approval. The said supplemental budget number 1, calendar year 2025, has been referred to the LFC through the municipal budget officer, the technical review, and preliminary review. After review, the hereby declared the operative and entirely effective upon its approval subject to the posting requirements under Section 59 of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of the budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in Section 305 of the Code. It is understood that the review actions does not authorize any item of appropriation and does... that is prohibited by the inconsistent with provision of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing and execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines, procedures, and the budget execution prescribed under the budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. I move for the adoption of said committee report, Madam Chair.
In a second.
A second, Madam Chair.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, anymore of committee report?
Committee Report, Madam Chair, from the Committee on Rules.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I forgot to pass a resolution of this said committee report, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would like to move to declare operative and entirely effective upon approval of the supplemental budget number 1, calendar year 2025 of Barangay Logan and barangay sanito of 2,435 pesos, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's my turn, I think, Madam Chair, from the Committee on Rules.
How many committee reports do you have?
I have nine committee reports. I will start with Committee Report Number 107, Madam Chair. Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances. Subject: The Barangay Revenue Code of Barangay Don Andres, Barangay Bakalan, and Barangay Tiayon, all of EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matters were referred, the resubmitted Barangay Revenue Code of Barangay Don Andres, Bakalan, and Tiayon for final review and its eventual approval. The committee conducted a second committee meeting discussing fully the whole content of the resubmitted Barangay Revenue Code of Barangay Don Andres last September 1 and on September 16 for Barangay Sa Bakalan and Tiayon. After a thorough second review, the committee now finds the content finally of the said revenue codes of Barangays Don Andres, Bakalan, and Tiayon to be legal, in order, meritorious, and beneficial to the people of the above barangays and therefore declaring the Barangay Revenue Code of Don Andres, Bakalan, and Tiayon in the municipality of EPEL to be in full force and in effect. I move, Madam Chair, for the acceptance and approval of this report.
In a second.
I finally move for this report a resolution declaring the Barangay Revenue Code of Barangay Don Andres, Barangay Bakalan, and Barangay Tiayon to be in full force and in effect, Madam Chair. Next, Committee Report. Committee Report Number 108 from the Committee on Rules. This time, our subject matter here is an ordinance institutionalizing the local implementation of universal health care, integrating barangay health services, health referral system, and public-private partnerships in health care delivery and for other purposes. I think the author of this proposed ordinance is Honorable Elias Dankalan. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred for review and approval, an ordinance sponsored by Sangguniang Bayan member Elias Dankalan. Again, an ordinance institutionalizing the local implementation of the universal health care. The committee meeting was conducted last September 16, reviewing the said proposed ordinance. And therefore, the committee, after a thorough review and evaluation, finds it in order within the bounds of the law and hereby recommends that the proposed ordinance, Madam Chair, be calendared for second reading in the next regular session.
Can calendar next... for second reading next session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calend... Committee Report Number 109, again from the Committee on Rules. Subject: An ordinance institutionalizing the local nutrition improvement program of the municipality of EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay, strengthening nutrition services at the barangay level, promoting healthy dietary practices, and establishing sustainable support mechanism for community nutrition. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred for review and approval, an ordinance sponsored by Honorable Sangguniang Bayan member Ayan Sabion. This is an ordinance institutionalizing the local nutrition improvement program of the municipality of EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay, strengthening nutrition services at the barangay level, promoting health dietary practices, and establishing sustainable support mechanism for community nutrition. The committee, again, conducted a meeting and review for this last September 16. And after the thorough review and evaluation, the committee finds it in order within the bounds of the law and hereby recommends that the proposed ordinance be calendared for second reading in the next session, Madam Chair.
Calender for second reading next session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee Report Number 110 from the Committee on Rules. Subject here is the proposed ordinance imposing a truck ban in the municipality of EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay, during the specified hours to decongest traffic and providing penalties for violation thereof. This is being sponsored by Sangguniang Bayan member Honorable Elias S. Dankalan. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the ordinance imposing a truck ban in the municipality of EPEL, Sambuanga Sibugay, during the specified hours to decongest traffic and providing penalties for violations thereof as the LGEUs responds to the rising traffic congestions as the number of delivery trucks are increasing also. The truck ban ordinance prohibits big delivery trucks to enter the heart of the municipality during peak hours of the day and only be allowed on specified hours of the day that can be considered non-busy hours to resolve traffic issues and concerns that affect the public in general. During the committee meeting held at the Sangguniang Bayan last September 16, the committee members all agreed that the content of the ordinance itself satisfies its purpose and it is complete in its substance. The committee therefore recommends that the proposed ordinance will undergo public hearing as prerequisite to second reading anytime soon, Madam Chair.
For public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's go to Committee Report Number 111 from the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances. Subject here is the Memorandum of Agreement between the Local Government Unit of EPEL and UCPV Savings Bank Incorporated. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions... The committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the MOA, to be undertaken between uh the LGU Epeel represented by Honorable Mayor Ramses Troy Oligario and UCPB Savings Bank and its duly authorized representative. The agreement circles around extending salary loan facility to employees and elected officials of LGU Epeel in times of need. The committee after its thorough review find the content of the proposed MOA to be in order and within the bounds of the law and therefore recommends its approval and further recommends the authority of the local chief executive to enter into MOA with UCPB Savings Bank. Motion to adopt the report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Another motion, Madam Chair, approving the content of uh the memorandum of agreement to be undertaken by LGU Epeel and UCPB Savings Bank, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Finally, for this report, Madam Chair, uh a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, to enter into MOA with UCPB Savings Bank, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, discussion, and agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh next, committee report is uh committee report number one one two from the committee on rules. Subject here is the memorandum of agreement between the local government unit of Epeel and Land Bank of the Philippines on a program called Land Bank Link that Bisportal. Remarks and recommendations, the committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the memorandum of agreement to be undertaken between the municipal government of Epeel and Land Bank of the Philippines on a program called Land Bank Link that Bisportal, an undertaking geared towards modernizing the bank and client's payment collection services especially for the local government unit of Epeel. Under this modernized program, clients of LGU Epeel can directly transact payments of their obligations with the municipal government through the said bisportal of the bank, using the internet e-payment scheme favorably to the best interest of the public. And uh in addition, Madam Chair, we will be uh doing away with irregularities of collection, Madam Chair. It can be prevented one hundred percent if we will adopt this uh uh scheme, Madam Chair, uh uh a modern scheme uh to be introduced by Land Bank of the Philippines. No more middlemen involved and uh we can pay as uh presented by the manager herself. We can pay anytime, anywhere, uh visagasata. So the committee after its thorough review finds the content of the proposed MOA to be in order and within the bounds of the law and uh it will teach people to embrace technology uh that is within our grasp and therefore recommends its approval and further recommends the authority of the local chief executive to enter into MOA with Land Bank of the Philippines. Motion to adopt the report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Another motion, Madam Chair, to uh 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 approve the content of the memorandum of agreement between the local government unit of Epeel and Land Bank of the Philippines, Madam Chair.
In a second.
Finally, for this report, Madam Chair, uh I move for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, to enter into memorandum of agreement with Land Bank of the Philippines through the Land Bank Link that Bisportal program, Madam Chair.
In a second. Second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee report number one one three from the committee on uh rules. Subject here, an ordinance establishing the standards and guidelines for the operation of flea markets in each of the twenty-eight barangays of the municipality of Epeel and enforcing penalties for violations thereof. The committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Joel Abel, establishing the standards and guidelines for the operation of flea market in each of the twenty-eight barangays of the municipality of Epeel and enforcing penalties for violations thereof. This is a local law that will regulate the establishment of barangay flea markets known as Chiangge as the municipality is rapidly increasing its population. This is very timely, Madam Chair. The proposed ordinance aims to regulate and provide guidelines from the local government unit of Epeel to every barangay that will have interest in the formal establishment of flea markets to cater to the needs of the people within the barangay who will no longer have much time to visit the main public market of the municipality. The proposed ordinance shows noble intention in its crafting and very timely to the rapid growth of the population. Therefore, the committee finally recommends that this will immediately proceed to the second reading for further discussion and scrutiny of the content of the proposed ordinance during the second reading in the next coming session of the Sangguyang Bayan of Epeel. Motion for the acceptance of this report, Madam Chair.
Second. Seconded, calendar for next session.
Last, committee report, committee report number one one four from the committee on uh uh rules. Subject here is the memorandum of agreement or MOA for salary loan for LGU between the local government unit of Epeel and MSU IIT National Multipurpose Cooperative. The committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred for review and approval, the MOA for a salary loan for LGU Epeel and uh MSU IIT National uh Multipurpose Cooperative. The committee after thorough review and evaluation finds it in order and uh within the bounds of the law and hereby recommends for its approval. Motion to adopt the committee report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Uh another motion, Madam Chair, approving the content of the MOA between the local government unit of Epeel and the MSU IIT National Multipurpose Cooperative, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second. Finally, for this final report, uh a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, to enter into memorandum of agreement with uh the MSU IIT National Multipurpose Cooperative, Madam Chair.
Second. Second.
That's all for today, Madam Chair, thank you.
Any more committee report? Yes, Honorable.
I move for five minutes recess.
Okay, recess for five minutes.
Angkan ngayon si Bae. 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 Angkaon, di payo kayo. Pag open sa CCTV, gwalteray na yes. Ayun na, amot lang yan. Problema kayo. Ah, mukha ka. Yan, nanay isa din ha. Bunggay na ginapamalit ko. Matayang asawa, nagregrinan sa matayang asawa. Ano na pagkahumay? Yang ginyuwan, ang isuon sayang asawa. Nana ay mga anak, masakitun papod. Ang nang ginyuwan. Sinong ito, ba't nagpapagbigay ng sayong kapaninong? May walat, wala nga, murang nakakatapos siguro. Gabalik-balik din na siya. Kulit-kulihan kami anak ito, ako kang bae. Sauna ha, mayor ko, ako kang bae. Terapi sa kuha, kulit-kulit na na. Eh kaon, eh vice mayor man ko, lamig kayo magtang solicitation this way.
The first one is the ordinance converting the municipal covered court into a designated emergency command center during calamities, disasters, or other emergency situations and for other purposes. This has been laid on the table and sponsored by Honorable Elias Nangpalan.
Ah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
Um, considering that uh, this has been laid on the table how many times already? And in consideration also uh, to the change of plans. So I move that uh, this proposed uh, ordinance be canceled already from the uh, second reading in the next coming sessions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, may we ask uh, the proponent of this ordinance if he is amenable with the um, suggestion of our floor leader?
Yes, Honorable Nangpalan.
Hello, um. I, I also uh, agree with uh, Kunti Halat Yong to to remove or uh, with, pero not with, not uh, withdraw. I mean temporary cancel.
Temporary?
Yes, because uh, this ordinance may be implement.
We can temporary cancel at least uh, one.
Still. Uh, because of uh, some changes of the plan.
You cannot temporary cancel that. Cancel reyukah.
Uh. Yes. Okay.
Madam Chair, laid on the table. Two minutes recess, Madam Chair. Yes, considering the discussion that we had uh, during our break, Madam Chair, I'd like to withdraw my uh, motion uh, to delete this uh, proposed ordinance that has been laid on the table for so many times.
Okay. So just a second for that?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second. Okay, so same, lay on the table, and ordinance sponsored by Honorable Nangpalan. Letter B.
Item B, we have the ordinance granting the amount of 20,000 to each barangays as financial assistance in line with the celebration of our own Epeel in recognition of their continued support and collaboration with the elders program activities. This is sponsored by Honorable Glenn, Ayansabihan.
Honorable Sabihan.
Um, still lay on the table, Madam Chair, still I would uh, matupok sa budget of office if uh, still of uh, availability of funds, uh, for 2026, Madam.
Okay, thank you. Lay on the table. Letter C.
Item C, we have the ordinance granting monthly incentives of 1,000 to the 28 barangays PWD presidents of this municipality for a period of one year and appropriating funds therefor. This is sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr.
Honorable Alcoriza.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh. For this proposed ordinance, uh, Madam Chair, I move for the second reading an ordinance granting monthly incentives of 1,000 pesos to the 28 barangays PWD presidents of this municipality for a period of one year and appropriating funds thereof.
In a second.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, part of the discussion, uh, during the formulation of this proposed ordinance, Madam Chair, uh, the no less than the Pidaw uh, officer of the municipality of Epeel uh. Uh, told me that uh, this will be taken from the 5% uh, budget of the Pidaw. So, for sure, uh, this will be uh, funded appropriately, Madam Chair. The 1,000 pesos for 28 uh, presidents of the PWDs in the 28 barangays, Madam Chair.
Okay, my uh, Honorable Alcoriza, but before we proceed with that, I think we have to ask for the certification from the budget.
Yes, yes.
Of the aba. Kay delete that the waton sa taas.
Yes.
Kawaya certification.
My suggestion, Madam Chair, is if we will approve this, uh, during the submission of this uh, ordinance for review in the Sangkun Yang Palaluwigan, uh, we will certainly attach the certification from Pidaw, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Ebon.
May I ask the proponent of this ordinance, Madam Chair? If it has a budget for the continuity of this uh, um, what is this, this uh, 1,000 peso incentive to every president only of the PWD in I- in Ibarangay?
That is true, Madam Chair.
Because, I, I mean, Madam Chair, if the president or the, the head of the P- the uh, PWD now certifies that there is availability of funds, perhaps that availability of funds is good for this year, the basic savings in la. How about next year and preceding years? So are, uh, are, is there a need, again, to allocate a specific budget for this purpose?
Actually, ang budget ilay sumiyo one year. Karoon na ngayon.
Yes.
I think that's the question is how about for the next following years here?
Madam Chair, exactly my question, why specifically for one year only? Why not continue with Pidau? Kasi it would be, maybe, I don't know, they will view it unfair. What is with this year, nga naman sa succeeding dili? So, maybe we can answer this to make it clear also for our recipients and the rest of the PWDs.
Okay.
Anyway, Madam Chair, this is just part of the... What is this? The... Because the proponent entertains question. However, is a bit mukha ni for second reading?
Yes, second reading na karoon. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, pwede man na isa i... For the next one, is sulod na isa sa annual budget na could permit ngang tag 1,000?
We can amend the title of the ordinance.
We can... Can we also get...
Delete the period of one year.
Yes, and maybe also... Maybe also ask from the... From our Pidau if this will be feasible for the... Or sustainable for the following years?
That's why, Madam Chair, I raised my question earlier. Is this 20,000 really good for one year? Because...
1,000?
1,000.
Ang budget nila is 20,000?
No, 1,000 per barangay president. So, that will be 28,000 per month.
Ang atay budget pwede siya masulud annual?
Because the Pidau, I believe they have, I think, allocated within the 5%, no?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, can it be sustained in the following years?
I think so. Yes, I think so.
Allocation to... For this?
Yes, if it can be done this year, why not in the following year? So, I am amenable to amend this... The title of the ordinance itself to be a sustainable program, delete the limitation of a period of one year.
Madam Chair, I believe there is a need for us to also hear in the part of the budget, Madam Chair, if we could possibly entertain this. Because take note that if we will take into consideration this ordinance and even for the succeeding years. Kinahanglan i appeal maniniya sa iyahang. One, now, question. Could this office guarantee with the recommendation of the budget office, available kaya nila nila raise every month in a year?
Actually, ang kaproposan eh.
Ang Pidau.
Ang Pidau head. So, pasabot, na agitagwa isa lagi i... Kaya giun. Kaya ang nagproposi kwan man. Si Madam Kwan.
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
May is mamay.
We understand that. But in other side of the comment, we must also learn and understand nga kaya ba man na to ni? Because they might be perhaps only basing under... Perhaps this year's budget nga mo exceed sila, na isobra nila. But however, how about in the other ba, succeeding years? Kaya ba ni? Pwede ba na?
May... May... Madam Chair... Madam Chair, may we ask from the Pidau head regarding the concerns of Honorable Ebol and also from our budget officer if we can sustain this program?
Can we just lay this one on the table to be discussed next session?
Can I have one example? Can I have one example, Madam Chair? Can I have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Take note that the market and slaughterhouse has a dual function. Number one is we render basic services to our people. That's the number one. Ikaduha is the market and slaughterhouse is an income generating institution. However, during the budget deliberation, I asked for 500,000 concrete pavement part of the slaughterhouse. Diligan i makayang ihatag. We asked for another budget for meat delivery van. For... What is this? For... For large cattle. Kaidili man pwede na tong iisagul ang atong large cattle support because we have our mga halal there in the public market. Diligan i na tong makayang ihatag. And that is my concern, that if we will approve this ordinance, we might as well... Mahatagun niya na tong kubrimi sa bagasan ni dapat kuha on diya. So, I mean, I am not against this ordinance. But I mean is that, what I mean is that it must conform with the budget office, the local finance committee nga kaya ba na to ni kubrimi? That's my remarks, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Ebol. Yes.
Madam Chair... Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, I believe that the PWD have, I think, 1% allocation.
5%.
5% allocation for the budget.
Just like the senior citizens.
Yes, but it's totally different from the market which they don't have.
Yes.
So, from that, they should be at least compliant, not less. It could be more, but not less. So, may we ask from the PWD, from the Pidau head that if we are to install this program, makasulud ba siya sa 5%? Kasi the question now there is if more than the 5%, dihan namang good magkuanta sa budget. So, on the side of that, muna again, I would like to ask sa Pidau head na to and our budget officer regarding such matter kung ma-accommodate na to isya.
Actually, Madam Chair, during the formulation of this proposed ordinance, I had the chance to meet the Pidau head herself. And she assured me that this is part of the 5% budget of the Pidau, just like the senior citizens. In fact, looking at the 5%, it can increase every year. It remains at 5%, but because our NEP, our local income increases on a yearly basis also, in terms of totality of the budget, it will increase. Actually, para na ko, ang issue regular ikanin one year, I agree with the one year nga dapat himoon siyang sustainable. But as to the budget of the Pidau can afford giving the 1,000 pesos, I believe so, Madam Chair. Because we have already a meeting with the Pidau head, that she can afford from the 5% budget of the Pidau. Ang akoraguna kita dari tama, nga dapat himoon siyang sustainable not only for one year.
And also, Madam Chair, regarding the... Maybe isasad sa concern would be accommodating this ordinance, will it not compromise other programs of the Pidau? So, muna, makasta. So, can we... This is good, no? I mean, we are... We want to help them, kai... Actually, the 1,000 is very minimal, no? With the inflations and the expenses karoon. But muna, ang ato amansad good is, would it compromise other services of the Pidau? So, may ugyodog, may invite na to po na head. Maybe next regular session, if okay with our proponent, we can invite our budget officer and our Pidau?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am amenable. In fact, I move that this will be... This proposed ordinance will be rescheduled for second reading in the next regular session and move further that the secretariat will invite the Pidau head during the deliberations for second reading in the next regular session, Madam Chair. And also the budget officer, if it's very... If it's needed, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Alcoriza. Schedule for second reading next session. Next session, yapun na ilong. Oo. Then in the next session, yapun na. Invite the budget officer and the head of Pidau.
Okay, the next, item D, we have here the ordinance establishing a business incubation center in this municipality providing support services and incentives to early-stage entrepreneurs and to promote innovation, job creation, and sustainable local enterprises. This is sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr.
Honorable Alcoriza.
Yes, Madam Chair, I... In relation to this proposed ordinance, Madam Chair, I move that this will be calendared for second reading again in the next regular session, Madam Chair.
Calendared for next session, for second reading.
Item E, we have the ordinance granting social pension to indigent senior citizens in this municipality again. This is sponsored by Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr.
Madam Chair, again, in relation to item E, an ordinance granting social pension to indigent senior citizens in the municipality of Epeel, as well as an ordinance, item F, granting cash incentives to any living octogenarian, non-genarian, and centenarian, will be calendared for second reading in the next regular session, Madam Chair. And again, I move that the budget officer as well as the MSWDO herself will be invited during the second reading in the next regular session, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Letter E and letter F will be scheduled for next regular session.
Item G, we have the ordinance establishing the local research and development incentives program of Epeel providing support mechanisms and incentives to promote innovation, scientific research, and technology-driven development. It's sponsored by Honorable General Boarder Andalaho.
Honorable Boarder?
Entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Local Research and Development Incentives Program of Epeel Providing Support Mechanisms and Incentives to Promote Innovation, Scientific Research, and Technology-Driven Development..." Development. I so moved, Madam Chair.
And a second?
Seconded.
Discussion eh. May amugawas? May amugawas?
Dili maopen?
Agribusiness amugawas.
Di put sanga, di pu kaopen. Binagukakura.
Agribusiness apo? Wala, open, open.
Um, recess, Madam Chair?
Recess, okay, recess for five minutes. Agribusiness...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask from the proponent of the ordinance, Madam Chair, to give us an example of the local research and development incentive program so that we could really understand what is this? We could visualize what is this all about?
Okay, so, Madam Chair, this program is actually... Example, there are institutions who are making research for development and innovations. So, this is... We could use... The LGU Epeel can use these programs and innovations in our... For us to use also in our... So... Because there are schools and institutions who are actually making research and... Research and innovations So that we could use in our...
Okay, actually, the LGU is the skills center and we have all the data manggo dari sa LGU. That's why, kana imuhang ordinance ang ipasa, muk sulud gitda diha. That ordinance. Kaya ginapdiri man giinakuha ang data sa nunay sa atua.
And we could use that for our benefit. This is actually a creation of the council. Municipal Research and Development Council.
Oo. Kaya importante kana isa, Honorable Ebol, moni atong kulang atong sa assessment na to, o sa evaluation na to. Sumone ilang dipangita giun, actually?
Madam Chair... May I know from the proponent if she is planning to also maybe establish a facility for this purpose?
Honorable Boarder?
Actually, this is for the creation, for the municipal development... I mean, research and development council, so... I mean, facility.
Ang facility yang ikuwan, oo.
Facility.
Nasa iown, kuwan giun nila.
Kaya kuwan man tao, we are innovations, research. Yes, na may council, so ang council is... Consists of the chairperson, ang municipal mayor. So, if na ay mga research, sila ang mag... Mag... Mag sala.
Yeah, actually, I think ang dipangutanan ni Honorable Katalonya is a facility. Facility nato, naabatah, we can provide the facility. Yeah.
Madam Chair, yes, I agree with the question of the Honorable Katalonya, Madam Chair, because we might as well in the near future need another budget para mahimong nang realistic nang research and development program.
Yes, uh, but for now, Madam Chair, um, we will still, uh... This is still the creation of the council. So, uh, after this one, maybe we could plan for the creation of the facility and...
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, in fact, for me, Madam Chair, this is a very beautiful ordinance.
And also helpful.
Because, yes, because in the first place, every aspect, every sector of the community will be affected. Promote innovation, scientific research, technology-driven development. This is very timely for Ipeel as we geared towards cityhood. I suggest that if we approve this ordinance, this will be incorporated as the... Because the question now is, nabatay office, nabay ibutang nimong training center. We already have the Ipeel Technology Training Center, ITTC. We can perhaps incorporate the ITTC with this, with the creation of this, uh, Research and Development Center, Madam Chair. Para ma-incorporate na siya, ma-mas mukusug ang ato, nindot mangukay. For example, in the municipality of Ipeel, uh, we have, in terms of agriculture, we already have here the, uh, the... Sani, uh, Rubber Research Center. Ano ba'to? Katunggya sa sanito? So, we can also try to coordinate in terms of agriculture. Unsa may, unsa may, unsa may innovations nga ginahimo sa Rubber Research Center in the province of Sambuanga Cibugay, this is a national office. So perhaps we can coordinate with them, and we can have our own innovation in terms of trainings, in terms of adoption of new technology, para ma-improve nato ang rubber. So, money, nindot ni siya kayo para naku, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, the reason I'm asking for the facilities because, um, if we are to promote innovation, research, and technology development, definitely we'll be needing equipments. So, um, to realize, because this is a very good ordinance, to realize this ordinance, we have to also comply with what it needs. So muna, I'm asking, uh, uh, for, um... For, uh, unsa ba ang, uh, ang, what are the plans within this ordinance? Kasi this is, uh, I know that it will establish the Research and Development Council, but the title of the ordinance is Research and Development Incentives. So yes, there is the council, and yes, there is, there will be IRR, but beyond that, we also have to consider not only making this ordinance in paper, but to realize it. And also, one thing is, um, nabatay target population onto this, ma? Like, uh, unsa age population or any, any open brilliant mind, nga pwede ta magkuhanani?
Madam Chair, uh, in item, in section seven, uh, funding, it says funds necessary for the implementation of the ordinance shall be collected from the Municipal Development Fund, the 20% Local Development Fund, or sourced from grants, partnerships, and other lawful means. So, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to request the proponent to kindly refer this to the Municipal Chief Executive, if he is willing to put up funds from the 20% Economic Development Fund for this purpose. Para mahumanata.
Um, uh, also to suggest is, yeah, the what, um, Honorable Alcoriza mentioned, maybe also, uh, that's why we ask for facilities, to incorporate it in the ordinance, partnership with other agencies that could help, no? Or also kanang, um, agencies that are already established, na pwede na tong matapsa atong ordinance, to make it more realistic ang atong goals.
Okay, so, um, since there are many questions that are not yet clearly, um, answered, um, I move that this ordinance be laid on the table for further study.
Uh, before, Madam Chair, before, before the proponent, uh, will be allowed to, uh, to calendar this for second reading again in the next regular session, I'd like to remind that in section eight, in the Implementing Rules and Regulations IRR, gurimangod nato na siya, paghimona sa IRR, the MRDC, to be headed by the municipal mayor, shall issue the Implementing Rules and Regulations within 90 days upon the approval of the ordinance. So naanadhiha tanan mag... Ilatak nanatanan diha ang pagimplement ni anak, diriragina mag... Diriranatanan, pero, as to the budget, much better that you will consult the mayor.
Oo, pero mas maayo maning agidiskasana to pagayo karoon, diba? And then, sapag ato ni mo kang mayor, kay balon na kausay ipangdiskas ni mo. Kay na nanamanigawa samantanan, kapart sa atong discussion. So, we'll just schedule this for next, uh, next session for a second reading.
Madam, Madam Chair, again, uh, for the, the proponent of the ordinance to consider, perhaps the, the proponent of the ordinance, Madam Chair, should now also consider the, uh, earlier mentioned, uh, um, what this is, IRR. Kay para unya, pagkahumanan eh, we must also get into, upak sa nato ni, ang manner of implementation of the ordinance. There must be an, an IRR being established now, being prepared now by the proponent of the ordinance, sa gunsaon nang mahimong siyang realistic. At the same time, nabay, nabay IRR ngayi...
Wala pa.
Oh, we have to approve first.
Because I, I recall, Madam Chair, when I sponsored the Sambuanga Cibugay Rubber Industry Development Board, we were not able to immediately allocate funds for the purpose, because the number, uh, next question there is, paunsa manatunin na nanay IRR? That's why, uh, when I, when I nanahuman akong term, napamisa mga 40 to 50% sa IRR, manang wala gitsana nariyalize. Although, the following year, the budget was realized, wa, it was already included in the annual budget, but however, wala gipunsa naitinipan because of the IRR na pending pa. That's what I mean, Madam Chair.
Well, that's a good point, Madam Chair. Uh, pwede man siguro gud nga magformulate na tadaan in preparation, o ga internal rules and regulations, para pagapprove sa atong ordinance, sayo na kayo na to magkuan, naanaman atong IRR daan, paspas kayo?
Yes, that's what I mean.
So, pwede regapun?
Madam Chair, yeah, uh, maybe our proponent can consider the suggestions in terms of drafting an IRR, but we also have to be reminded that it is the council that have to approve and review the IRR. So only, um, maybe ang ato ang proponent can draft and then suggest for, subject for revisions and improvement, of course.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Katalonya, yes, Honorable.
Madam Chair, in consideration nga, na ata sa point nga atong gisuggest na mo formulate naog IRR, uh, maybe the proponent would consider also nga states sa section six, sa mga items A, B, C, D, and E, if, uh, be specific ta'if, tanan ba pwede maavail nga incentive or only one? Naaman sa section six na may avail of the following, so I am asking if, tanan ba pwede nila makuha nga incentive as one? Tanan gud siya six kabuook, or isa lang ang pwede nila maavail with that six incentive? And also, in the item B, sa tax incentives, uh, how much tax are we talking, percentage na ilahang i-discount? Ato ang yatagga discount? That would be all, Madam Chair.
Honorable Boarder?
Uh, okay, uh, the suggestions are noted, so we will...
For further study?
Yeah. Needs further study, so...
Anyway, we're not in a hurry. We're not in a hurry.
So, I move that this, uh, ordinance be calendared again for second reading on the next regular session.
Calendared for second reading for next session.
Okay, item H, we have here the ordinance promoting agribusiness development in municipality, transforming traditional agriculture into sustainable agribusiness enterprise, providing mechanisms, incentives, and support services, the obvious. Sponsored by Honorable Irik Alibutdan.
Madam Chair, uh, in consideration with the, uh, absence of the proponent, uh, who is Honorable Irik Alibutdan, I move that this will be calendared again for second reading in the next session, Madam Chair.
Okay, calendared for next session. Other matters?
Other matters? Yes, uh, we give importance to these other matters, Madam Chair, because there are, uh, a few resolutions that Honorable Joel Abel will be sponsoring. And in fact, I also have one here. Uh, I'd like to take this from the calendar of business for today, Madam Chair. This, uh, meat establishment improvement program, uh, of the local government unit of Ipeel, we have a MWA. So, I propose that this will be approved at this point in time, Madam Chair. But I'd like to give the floor first to the Honorable Joel Abel.
Honorable Abel.
Sa namani si Dankpalan?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, Sampu ha? Magasawan ang Sampu si Dankpalan. Kayamupa?
Good morning, eh, everybody, especially to the Honorable Presiding Officer, the Honorable Majority Floor Leader, the my colleagues in Isangguyang Bayan, our secretary, our staff, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, una, I would like to ask apology that I am supposed to deliver these messages last Tuesday, but unfortunately, I was not able to continue and finish my attendance in Isangguyang Bayan. Kay pagkahuman sa atong kwan, naglai naman ako ang kwan, medyo nagtasak ng dugo. I am very thankful to some employees in the local government unit who helped me, and until finally that Dr. Verson advised me to take a rest and not to return to the Isangguyang Bayan in session, but advised me to go home. So, what nalapu ko ni Supak, kay doktor naman tong nagadvise. Again, laghan kayang salamat sa inyong tanan. I stood up before you, my dear colleagues in Isangguyang Bayan, because I want to explain with regards to the committee report that last session, in behalf of the Committee on Market Chairman, rendered by the Committee on Rules as being the vice chairman and slaughterhouse, relative to the referrals of the committee, um, on rules, which was referred to the Committee on Market and Slaughterhouse. First, RA 7160, otherwise known as the, uh, Local Government Code of 1991, mandates the Isangguyang Bayan to conduct investigation in any matters relative to the operation and management of the local government unit of Ipeel. The committee then facilitated the investigation and forwarded that, I mean, um, learned that the 13 stall owners or applicants, applicants pakay dilitaman to sila, kwan, interested applicants did not follow what is prescribed in the bidding process. That is why, based on our investigation, the committee referred that to the adjudication board of the public market for finality. So it's up now to the local government unit to make a final say, the final decision on what, uh, the committee will do. What I am implying now is the, the adjudication board. But may I emphasize, fellow colleagues, that this is not only happening this time. Again, I would like to emphasize that this is not only happening this time. I am even a living witness that this has been the practice, common practice of even the previous, previous administration. And that is why, um, we do this, because I, we have a common understanding. I, I, I hope you agree with us, with me, all members of Isangguyang Bayan. You agree with me that we have a common direction now? Ngahimong, uh, limpio, mahimong maayo, ang direction, ang management sa atong local government unit of Ipeel. Okay? So, our, our, uh, hope and our dreams that this will be totally stopped. I encourage, uh, the, the members of Isangguyang Bayan, the different department heads, the local, even the local chief executive, we must now stop this kind of mal practices. As I said, this is not new to us. Gikan paskani ato ginahimo ni? Karoon akong ihangyo, nobody is exempted. All of us must follow what is provided for by law. Second message, Madam Chair. Second, flood control scandal is the hottest issue nowadays in the national government, particularly the DPWH. Just imagine, Madam Chair, that the government invested billions of pesos, perhaps trillion of pesos, through loan, huh? Through loan, just to deliver the basic services, economic, social, and infrastructure and others to the pelpin of people. My question is, who will pay this huge amount of loan? Apilman ta diri sa Ipeel, apilman ta sa probinsya sa Sambuanga Cibugay? And this affect? not only, ah, not only our, our, our people in the, in the part of Luzong, in the part of Visayas, all of us, even Mindanao. With this kind of, ah, malpractices na ilang gihimo kitang tanan, it definitely, definitely affects the lives of our people, even our farmers. We cannot even approve by subsidy to our farmers nga naglisod in town kayo karundiha sa pagpananom, di ba, in the production. We cannot even right away provide subsidy for our drivers' operators kai kulang lagi tag budget. And here comes now, this malpractices corruption made by our high-ranking officials. However, may I ask, is this only happening in the DPWH? How about other national agencies? Like the Bureau of Customs, the, the, the LTO and others? Ang uban pagalik nahimo pagay ng kontrobersyal kani antong mga departamento. These are the very things, no? Question nga that remains, wa pa siguro, wa panato na naapeel, no? Wa pa nila na naapeel sa ilahang investigation. For all of these things, ah, Madam Chair, may I ask now, how about in the local government unit of Ipin? Again, I will say that are we now going to a direction of limpio na to ang atong dalan? Para mahimong limhimsok ang Ipin? Para ma, ma, makapot na to ang kayuhan o kalambuan? Dinhe sa atong lungsod, mahal nga lungsod sa Ipin, no? Is this not happening in the local government unit of Ipin? Allegedly, I have, I heard one, allegedly, I heard one in the market and slaughterhouse. There was one budget in the market and slaughterhouse just to, the budget to be released, ah, di ko kaya certain upila to particular nga budget. Pero allegedly, para allegedly marilis, of course, we understand that all of these transactions kay gubirnoman, it must follow, ah, bidding process, because di ba? Okay? Pero mayon tak, okay, no more bidding. Everything is, we, we, we'll go on smoothly, provided, we will cut 30% out of this. So it's just the same. Di ba? Unsa mga nanghitabuk dito sa kauluhan, ato puna siguro ginahimo dore. Another thing, this is very evident to all of us. How much are we allocating fuel in our vehicles? From the chief executive down to the Sangguyang Bayan, I mean to the Vice Mayor, down to the, the Sangguyang Bayan, the members of the Sangguyang Bayan, our department heads, ah, pila ka din ako siguro mangutan naglitro, barrels of fuel ang atong gina, gina gamit every day, especially when we have, um, programs, projects in different barangays, ah? Run by operated or what is this project by the local government unit of the municipality? In the local market, I always observe the price of fuel in the local market. The price of fuel in the local market runs only from 54 to 56. Taas, nga allegedly increase, maboto 56. But as of the moment is, naratas 54 point something. But in our, in, in the gasoline station nga nag supply na to, the, the current price is 62 to, to 63 per liter. See? Na i-increase from 5 to 10 pesos per liter. O siguro, ah, di kaboto 10. Siguro 5 to 8 or 9 pesos per liter. So just imagine that, per liter. Another thing is, catering services. Why are we allocating, budgeting, ah, catering services more than enough? Almost double the price of, ah, kada ato ang presyo sa kuwan. Di ba? Taas kayu siya ba? So why? Nganong, nganong na inani manisya? And that is why I am asking now, if our budget that we are using, these are only few, ha, kani ako ang gepangmention, these are only few. Ang akong pangutan na if the budget that we are using now to operate such, ah, mga undertaking sa municipality of Ipin, unsa paining budget ano, imaginary regiha po na to, there is no availability of funds nga ato magamit right away? Is this still collectable? That is why we are going to utang on of these things? And that is why, as an effect, mo na i-overhead nga from 5 to 10 pesos per liter sa fuel? This are, Madam Chair, a, a, a very big problem for us, no? Ang akong nakita nga morag MWA or regiha po sa national, og ato aneh siyang gepadayon na dinhe sa ato ang lungsod sa Ipin ang maum mga malpractices. So that's why this representation would like to request ah, the local finance committee perhaps to appear before the Sangguyang Bayan. Ah, we will, ang atwa lang is, for me, in my end, I just want to be, to be explained. Unsa piningan, manisya ngayon ano eh? I, i, collectible pagbagiha po ng ato ang ipambayan sa ang atong gepanggamit, karun, para sa ato ang operations? Another thing, when I was member of the, the Sangguyang Bayan in 2004, I was on, I, I was already one of those member of the Sangguyang Bayan reminding the, the, the engineering department about this temporary shantis before establishments along national highway. In fact, we, I, I, I requested the, the engineering department to always, ah, coordinate with the Samsoriko two. Kai, un, panalitan, wala ni sila ni sulod dyan sa unsa provision sa Balauod. They must not be, they must not be provided with, kana unsa peneh, daily sila, pwedeng, ah, konektan og kana kurinte para wala dyan untay magtuko dia along national highway? Di ba? Building permit, kani ato pamla na to in tawo nga gepangdiscuss 2004 pa, I understand? Ato ano ng gepangdiscuss before? But I do not know what happened to the engineering department that until now, it is still our problem. Mayon sila, ang amo adong lugar dito, na daumi, na ami violation. I, I start my operation at the Mihadin, ah, Itri, 2023. Manang, un papirmaon ko violation, I asked the engineering department, you try to see daw ano ay others? Kemorg kana, sila una pa man siguro na nako. I remember, I remember, reminded the engineer pulan-pulan, sa una ramla na to ang gepangdiscuss. But you allowed it. You try to see Victoria King Hotel, ah, un sa siya kaduol sa national highway. Pero I, I do not know what happened to the engineering. During the construction, og naghimon ni sila sa, nagperform sila sa ilang trabaho, unta to wala na, unta nila ni gialaw. Di ba? This must not be allowed. And others, laghan kayo din ha? That's why, ah, I, I hope that this will be thoroughly studied ba by the engineering department and perhaps, Madam Chair, next regulation. Ang ako alang to be clear lang, sakto ako ang gepanghatag nga insights that just to let us know, just to let us know. Unsa peneh, para put siguro majustify, ako I understand. Ah, karama negusiantin, natura, mublot ang ilahang presyo sa ilang commodities because bayran po na to after five months. So unsa o man na, sa ato mga negusiantin. So that's my observation, Madam Chair. So in connection, another thing, in connection with our, ah, short meeting kanina with the, with the Bureau of Local Government Finance, ah, Madam Chair, it came to our, our discussion that there is a need for us to, um, create a task force to update our LEE in the municipality of Ipin. So in, in, in Ipin, we have three. One is market, two is slaughterhouse, and the third is terminal. Now, all of these three LEE has a separate ordinance. Madam Secretar, exactly, no? Ah, three ordinances with, eh, eh, what is this? Individual respective business plan. So I heard that business plan, business plan before. They even demanded that when buhi pasianhing dodong nga wala dyan siya na realize. And when I see and analyze all these things, di dun eh kaya sa mido. Walay kaya makahimo siguro ano eh sa Ipin. That's why I made a suggestion that why not, um, hire nilang specialist to do this work? Para ato aning iaandapon, everything will be complied, then submit to the Sangguyang Bayan for consideration. So at this point in time, Madam Chair, may I be allowed to pass a resolution recommending the Honorable Mayor Ramses Troy Oligario to issue a, an executive order for the creation of, of task force to update the public market, slaughterhouse, and terminal ordinances in the municipality of Ipin? I sumo, Madam Chair.
I second.
Ah, there's a motion passed by Honorable Abel and he second.
I second.
Ah, seconded by Honorable Alcoriza and the discussion amendments, discussion? Ah, Honorable Catalunya.
Um, ah, Madam Chair, I would just like to inquire the proponent since he is asking for a task force reviewing the said, ah, ordinances ba, Sir Joel, no?
For, for this particular?
Ah, because I, if I recall, there is already a TWG that was created for the purpose of reviewing all the ordinances. So can it be incorporated on that technical working group already and not a separate entity?
I raised that, ah, observation, Madam Chair, during our short meeting before this morning. And the, the Sir Alan from the BLGF ah, recommends that there must be a, an specific task force to look into these, these three ordinances para mapastrock, to facilitate in the sense that we are now, ah, moving on, no? Moving on sa paghimo og, ah, what is this? Ah, in, in the preparation of our
Business plan.
Business plan for our local economic enterprise. This is a separate, separate, ah, ah, what is this task force, ah, Madam Chair?
Point of inquiry, Madam Chair, this, isn't this a redundancy already? Um, considering that the technical working group will be reviewing all the ordinances, can it be like, ah, not a separate, but a subset of the technical working group where they could assign to specifically work or look into these three? Since the technical working group would be reviewing all the ordinances? Just a point of inquiry, maybe it will be a redundancy in terms of, ah, function sa technical working group?
As I said, Madam Chair, I already raised this during, ah, during our short meeting this morning. And we, we already, we already discussed that, that we already approved a resolution ah, requesting the Honorable Mayor to create a technical working group to review all, all ordinances in the municipality of Ipin. But, ah, I said, as I said, our guest, our specialist ah, cited that it must be an specific nga kani review para mapastrock, para mas madali bah, ang ato ang, ah, pag, pag, resolve ah, and, and, and the gathering, ah, old data that the kuwan, the BLGF is looking into.
Yeah, um, maybe we could, um, ah, 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 revise it, ah, to, ah, ah, rephrase it to, ah, economic, ah, specifically for the economic enterprise
Ah, okay, okay.
Task force.
Okay, okay. Okay. So I, ah, I will recall, rephrase my resolution, Madam Chair. A resolution recommending to the Honorable Mayor Ramses Troy Rambo Oligario to issue a, an executive order, ah, specifically, a technical working group, specifically, we look into the creation, ah, and to update the only, the only three ah, local economic enterprise of the local government unit of Ipin, namely, ah, the market, the slaughterhouse, and the terminal, Madam Chair.
Any second to the motion? Any discussion, amendments? Objection? Okay, hearing none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another, another resolution, ah, based on my earlier observation, Madam Chair, I, I move to pass a resolution addressed to the DPWH sending us also, or providing us also a copy of all, um, infrastructure development projects, including flood control in the municipality of Ipin, including the status, the, the, the PWU, ah, PWG and, ah, what is this? Apo, paamin, PW, PW, and the status of the, the, ah, project, Madam Chair. For one example, that is why I am asking this, eh, everyone siguro sa ato ang mga kita anang o ongoing project diha nga bridge sa Bakalan. Bakalan until now, bilan man na siya katuigi construct. But until now, di pagyapon magamit, kai wa mapuydalan, ano eh bridge. Pero pa'y dalan, wala na completely human, no? And there are, ah, this one. I, I do not know who finances, wa mapunta kalibutan ano eh, kai bagupuntang konsial og asagi kanisya nga money, no? And others, I believe there are, 20, anak, no? There is lungsod sa Ipin. We must be updated on this. Makahibalotang tanan, especially the Sangguyang Bayan because we are the one nga, ah, mu, mu, mutabang puta nila ba uglantaw perhaps review po of all these things, these projects ba, being implemented in the ground. Okay? So I move, Madam Chair, I sumo that, ah, a resolution So, I move, Madam Chair, I sumo that, ah, a resolution and ah, requesting the Department of, ah,
Public Works and Highways.
Public Works and Highways to provide us also copies of the ongoing and even katung na humana nga project for us also to look into, o, unsa bani, unsa status ano. I sumo, Madam Chair.
I second, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, ah, just to also, um, I believe that, ah, our good, um, councillor ah, Sheriff Mazin Hasm already have requested for that. But I don't know if it's from the municipal engineer or it's from the DPWH. But I believe it was already submitted, there were a list, if I recall, there was, we had a committee meeting and there was a list of the projects which were complete, ah, there was a list of, and the status of the project. So, um, maybe we can confer also with our good, um, colleague and then request for a copy of the, of the list.
Okay. But to make it official, Madam Chair, I am passing this resolution for the benefit of this Sangguneang Bayan of Ipil. It was already seconded by the Honorable, ah, Majority Leader, Madam Chair. Unless there is question?
Are there any other, ah, questions or?
Girulsa. Girulsa na nagbu-shon siya. Una, ah, bitang. Murug sa engineering gikan? Oh, sa engineering to gikan? Oh, naipil ni. So, I think, ah, pangayuuna to git sa DPWH, gikan nung to dery? Pero unka ba, if nae project ang kesagaran DPWH ba, unta, eh, ang program of works nanta nila, ipresenta nanta nila diri sa Sangguneang.
Ah, national bangunisya, national bangunisya, so.
But it has become an issue already during the investigation, karun nga mga panahon di ongoing investigation, nagreklamo ang mga municipal mayors because mukalit lagabot ang mga projects sa mga LGUs nga wala knowledge ang mga mayors, ugaling ng local officials.
Madam Chair.
Wala na coordinate sa mga issues.
I think the concern of Honorable Sabiho was tackled during the previous council ah, as the, ah, SB Secretary can remember and the other members of the SB. Girestoni Konsial Ramos nga naari mukalit nga mga projects nga wala takabalo and then magreklamo na ang mga constituents na'to kay pare atong kanal nga open lang siya den, na'y mga hagbong. So that time na discuss siya, and I think if wala ba siya napasaan o resolution nga, every project da nga moabot, diri sa Ipil, iconsult diri sa Sangguneang Bayan.
Ah, in addition to that, Madam Chair, um, regarding, um, coordination from the, um, national and then the local, ah, that was raised when they requested for, from the MPDC or M, ka, Mam, Ka, Mamnimfa, for the approval of katung, the, the, the project that was in front of Metro Bank, katung overpass. So that was the only time they presented, they presented because they needed the permit. Ah, but other than that, oh, wala sila, um, coordination, so, yeah, um, with, um, I am with Honorable Palalon, maybe we can, um, submit for a resolution regarding such matters so that, um, projects that will be implemented aware sa ang body, ang council. Ah, kay una sila'y mga projects, we can also have inputs kay, um, yeah, I don't know if they allow modifications, but at least, ah, the, the local body can have inputs unto such projects.
Ah, Madam Chair, ah, I'd like to propose that, ah, ah, at this point in time, in consideration to, you know, ah, what is happening in the whole country, I think we can pass an ordinance, not just a resolution, requiring DPWH to furnish the local government unit of Ipil necessary documents related to, ah, infrastructure projects implemented in the municipality of Ipil. I will do that in the next, ah, coming sessions, Madam Chair.
I am through, Madam Chair.
Ah, any more discussion?
Thank you very much. Unless there, there are still, ah, questions? Okay?
Any more discussions? Nagsekang?
Oh, I, I seconded the motion of.
We are now in the discussion period.
Yes, discussion period. Kung walay discussion, let's go to.
Amendments, objections, hearing none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ah, another, other matters, Madam Chair, ah, this is in relation to the, I think this is considered as urgent by the municipal mayor considering that, ah, our people from the slaughterhouse are keep coming to the Sangguneang Bayan asking if, ah, we have already given the mayor the authority to sign a MOA with the National Meat Inspection Service. Ah, however, we have received this endorsement from the municipal mayor. In fact, ah, during our session today, ah, it was already referred to the Committee on Rules, no? The, ah, National Meat Inspection Service, ah, the, from the Department of Agriculture, ah, a MOA that Ipil and the NMIS will implement the Meat Establishment Improvement Program in the municipality of Ipil. Considering of the urgency of this matter, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that this will be, ah, taken from the Committee on Rules ah, to the plenary at this point in time, Madam Chair, so that I can pass a resolution ah, ah, in relation to this request, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Discussion? Amendments? Ah, objection? Ah, hearing none, motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in this, ah, at this juncture, Madam Chair, I'd like to move for a resolution approving the content of the MOA between the National Meat Inspection Service and the local government unit of Ipil in relation to the implementation of a Meat Establishment Improvement Program or MEIP in the municipality of Ipil, Madam Chair. I sumo.
Any second? Ah, second?
Comment, comment, Madam Chair?
Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Honorable Ebol?
I am greatly favor that, ah, offer or program by the NMIS, Madam Chair. It is of great kana help sa local government unit of Ipil. But what I am now anticipating is that this project cost sixteen million pesos. If I am not mistaken, that existing slaughterhouse that we have, the budget of that, if I'm not mistaken, that was, sometimes, I, I can no longer, ah, recall, gun sangat uig. Pero wak una sayo, that's worth eighteen million pesos. That is why with this, um, program now by the National Meat Inspection Service, we have to know and find out if that slaughterhouse kana, ah, nabagitchay in sakto standard nga size. The take note, take note that in the, in the past session, we invited the engineer.
Kulankulan?
No. Engineer Caseres.
Caseres, ah.
Yes, and we asked that, ah, unsa estado atong magipang-pro cure mga, mga gamit na'to sa atong slaughterhouse. Pero daghanbi ato nga mga gamit nga dilig magamit, because dilig masulod sa atong slaughterhouse. Meaning, gamay ang atong slaughterhouse. That is why we have to, um, say this because I learned that kana slaughterhouse na as a depolok city is worth of this project now. Ah, that's worth sixteen million. So ato siyang langtawon dyan o, ah, nama sa standard, ah, what is this, ah, requirements.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Alcarisa, sorry.
Madam Chair, in relation to the inquiry of Honorable Joel Ebol, ah, I'd like to bring you to the, one of the verses of this memorandum of agreement which says, "The Meat Establishment Improvement Program, or the MEIP, is designed to assist local government units rehabilitate and/or complete their existing slaughterhouses and poultry dressing plants to comply with Class AA requirements under the NMIS accreditation system." So that's the purpose there, for us to be able to reach to that level of AA classification, ah, Honorable Joel. And, ah, according to this, ah, ah, agreement, initially, we will, ah, the, both the NMIS and the local government unit of Ipil, based on the contract, we will allocate three million pesos. Ah, and the NMIS will also allocate three million pesos which shall be used to pay the first fifty percent of the project cost directly to the winning contractor and/or fabricator upon completion of the specified scope of works. So meaning, if it's fifty percent, then we will be spending six million in total. NMIS will also spend six million. Kay we are required, based on the content of this MOA, to initially, ah, put up three million pesos to answer to the needs of this, ah, 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 improvement, ah, equivalent to fifty percent. So, what is fifty percent of six? That's three.
Madam Chair, may I ask how much is the total cost of that, ah, slaughterhouse?
Well, ah, if we will compute, six million from DI, ah, from, ah, local government unit of Ipil, six million from NMIS, we'll have a total of twelve million, based on the content of this MOA.
Okay, so, eh, according to the verbal information that I receive, ah, learned by my office, the counterparting scheme is, ah, eight million, eight million. So, in a total of sixteen million. However, now in the contract, ah, in the MOA.
It's only twelve.
Indicated there is six million NMIS and six million from the local government unit.
Yes.
Murug nagkagamay na hinuon siya ang project cost. So I am now, murug naalam na hinuon ko karoon, kewa basin niya pagabotan ang atong slaughterhouse, we will be again spending, then pagyahan agiapon ang atong slaughterhouse, devia nga, nga himoon. So, basin niya ang wala na.
Anyway, ah, it was, it was already, I mean, there was already an information that we received also in this Sangguneang Bayan that the Honorable Congresswoman of the Second District of Sampungasibugay is trying to also prepare a budget for the development of the slaughterhouse. So, kung nae budget dugang ang ato ang, ah, ang atong Congresswoman, plus kini, mosel outa ani, ah, I think, ah, makaya na'to ang AA standard nga slaughterhouse for Ipil. Diba, Honorable Dayan? Naanaman tui agreement, nag-inspeksyon agani ang atong engineering, ang atong engineering, ang, ah, office of the Congresswoman, ah, Doc Marley, and even, ah, during the site visit, the mayor was there.
Um, ah, yes, Madam Chair, ah, regarding the, um, the, ah, proposal, the totality of the proposal, ah, we are not, ah, well versed yet of it. But I believe that, ah, the good Congresswoman is looking into it. And, um, si, since, ah, Congress, ah, um, Honorable Ebol has concern, then, ah, why not we forward such queries and concerns to our good Congresswoman so that when they do the program of works, it can also be accommodated? So, um, naamantay, ah, project, and, ah, why not, ah, anyway, we are all aiming for, um, collaboration.
Yes.
So why not, ah, present also on our side before the project, um, implementation and proposal? So our concerns will also be accommodated for this, um, proposed slaughterhouse.
Anyway, ah, we learned, information reaches our office that the, the same program, this kind of program, ah, by the NMIS is now, or was already given to the city of Depolok. In fact, according to the information nga functional na daw na karun nga slaughterhouse, that is why I encourage, ah, members of the Concern Committee to go and visit to Depolok and try to see this kind of, ah, project. Ah, anyway, in the other hand, while I am also considering the, the proposal of the good Congresswoman from the Second District, ah, muratao kana, unsa patani, duha ang ato ang, because once we enter this and approve this MOA and forwarded it to the regional office and the national office and approve, ah, to follow na ni implementation, ano eh? Now, which is which now? Are we now, ah, entertaining still the, the, the offer? The plan of the Honorable Congresswoman? Or this kind of a project? Counterparting scheme project by the LGU between the LGU and the NMIS?
Precisely, Madam Chair, we are, um, since we are aiming for, ah, collaboration, teamwork, um, we can sit down with the good Congresswoman regarding this matter, with our executive, of course.
That is why, ah, I would like to suggest, Madam Chair, that we will just approve this, the content of the MOA, and then we give authority to the mayor, so that we can, he can start already, the mayor can start already, sitting down with, ah, actually, nagpadali ni sila kay sugdan nagyud ang, ang first moves ni ini. But if we will not approve this now, it will take another a week or perhaps, ah, ah, two weeks or even a month. Mahalangan nagyunhinong kayuta. Anyway, what is important is transparency, accountability. Ah, ang ato ang buhaton din ni. Anyway, di mamput ni siguro, kuwan, di mamput siguro, ang ako na dunggan manggood, ang ato ang good Congresswoman mo counterpart lang unsa kulang. So kung mo counterpart siya unsa kulang, then so be it.
Actually, no? Ah, Madam Chair?
Anyway, Madam Chair, anyway, Madam Chair, ah, kani, wak po na kaini nga programa, actually. And we are only, I understand that we are only given, ah, a limited time.
Yes.
Kay murug na ikat of anisya, if I'm not mistaken, murug.
Exactly.
Ah, twenty bato of this month, something like that, nga ma, maforward na dito sa regional office.
Yes.
But I, I agree, Madam Chair, that thi, this will be considered as, ah,
Urgent.
An urgent matter.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's a long discussion already, no? Tasakatong discussion about ani, and we, still, we end up to approve
Yes.
The resolution. So we just approve the resolution since it's urgent.
Yes.
Okay? Thank you.
So, any more discussion? Amendments, ah, objection? Hearing none, the motion is hereby approved. Hearing none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finally, I move for a resolution giving authority to the municipal mayor, Honorable Ramzes Troy Di Olegario to enter into memorandum of agreement with the National Meat Inspection Service, NMIS of the Department of Agriculture for the implementation of the Meat Establishment Improvement Program, MEIP, for LGU Ipil, Madam Chair.
Any second, it has been seconded. Any discussion, amendments, objections, hearing none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, still have other matters, Madam Chair? This is a request from the office of the mayor. I think this is urgent. I mean, first, ma'am, sir, in pursuit to the continuing of efforts to improve the quality of life of our, and accelerate rural development in our municipality, may I respectfully endorse for your favorable consideration that the passage of Disangguningang Bayan Resolution requesting the Department of Agri Reform or DART through its Honorable Secretary, Konrad M. Estrella III for possible funding support for the following proposed projects of the municipality of Ipil. Number one, solar power streetlights for million, Sanito Farm to Market Road for million, Teayon Maasin Farm to Market Road for million, Lumbya Timalang Farm to Market Road for million, Tawai Soklema Farm to Market Road for million. These projects are envisioned for the provide of sustainable infrastructure support that will enhance mobility, ensure safety, and promote agricultural productivity in our locality. In view of the above, may I request the honorable body to support the said endorsement through the resolution so that we can formally seek assistance of the Department of Agri Reform. We look forward for appropriate action in this matter. So that, Madam Chair, I would like to move a resolution requesting the Department of Agri Reform or DART through its Honorable Secretary, Konrad Estrella for possible funding, support of the following proposed project in this municipality. Solar Street Power Light for four million, Sanito Farm to Market Road for million, Teayon Maasin Farm to Market Road for four million, Lumbya Timalang Farm to Market Road for million, Tawai Soklema Market Road for million, so I move, Madam Chair.
Any second, it has been seconded. Any discussion, amendments, objections, hearing none, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other?
Madam Chair, I think there's other matters, I would like to move for adjournment.
Second, Madam Chair. Adjourn.
Ma'am? Vice, update gikan sa San Marcelino?
Sambales?
Oo. Okay, ang Castillejos mo'y nakadaog. Ang San Marcelino nakadaog siya, most innovative and most noteworthy sa LLA. Popular sila sa computerized franchise, live streaming na sila use na makitan ang tanang ordinan sa uga resolution since nineteen eleven. Napaispanish nga content. Yaha, o gusto ta, andu na ta sa iba, Sambales. Muli yang yatag nga, ato ang itinerary. Kung mabota dito, October ten, mataag sila, o libre nga lunch. Ah, wala, yang girekomen ang accommodation na'to, which is five minutes gikan dito ang SBMA. SBMA daw ko no, dayon, mataag lang siya free breakfast the following morning. Ah, Castillejos, then iba, Sambales, mo' yang yatag. Kung sa tenta mabota dito, so magimo nalang tag letter. Ah, sa third day, Friday is.